Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Adoption of Agenda for Regular Meeting. Under the provisions of Missouri Public Law and State of Missouri, the Board must adopt, by roll call, vote, an agenda that includes the time, date, place, and tentative agenda for a meeting. The copy of the notice and agenda for this meeting was posted on Friday, November 8, 2013, at the Administration Center, 1005 Waterford Drive, Florissant, Missouri. At the same time, copies of the notice and agenda were mailed to major radio and television stations, to four newspapers, to all municipalities, schools in the district, and posted on the district website. I need a motion to adopt the agenda.
No move.
It's seconded by Mrs. Hogshead and seconded by Mr. Martinez to adopt the agenda. Mr. Chabot.
Mr. Ebert.
Aye.
Mr. Brown.
Aye.
Mr. Schrader.
Aye.
Mrs. Hogshead.
Aye.
Secretary votes aye. Mr. Martinez.
Aye.
And Mr. Morris.
Aye.
Next portion of the meeting is allocated to the Board to provide an update of current activities and events, the district that may be of special interest to the Board members and the community. Mr. Brown? Mr. Ebert?
Yes. Ladies and gentlemen, the citizens of Ferguson-Floreson School District have come to speak to us, and I am prepared to listen to you, and I do not wish to take any more time because I want to give you as much time as is necessary for you to speak to us.
Mr. Ebert. Mr. Schrader.
I'd just like to mention, two weeks ago, I was with two members of Rotary as we distributed dictionaries to third grade students, and it was very interesting to hear when kids asked what they wanted to be. These are third graders. I'd like to be a pediatrician. I'd like to be a cosmetologist. The vocabulary was like they had read the dictionaries before we gave them to them. It was pretty amazing. And the second thing is I attended the Challenger Center 10-year anniversary, and I'd like everyone to mark Saturday from 10:00 to 5:00 as an open house of the Challenger Center. It's a great learning opportunity for our kids that is open to everyone in the St. Louis area. It's located right next to McClure South Berkeley High School. Thank you.
Mrs. Hogshead.
I have nothing to say.
Mr. Chabot.
I want to thank everybody for coming out here tonight. This has been quite a difficult time for our district and our community. I know everybody here wants answers, and... And I just feel obligated to... I did have... I did write a statement, and I've been contemplating to give it or not, but I feel compelled to do that. So, please bear with you... With me. I'm a little nervous, by the way. For those that don't know me, my name is Rob Chabot, and I am an active member of Ferguson-Floreson School District community. I'm a local business owner. I'm a husband, but most importantly, I'm a father of two children who attend schools here. I chose to run for the position of School Board three years ago with the support of my family and friends, and I ran because I really thought the students and the parents of our district needed a louder voice. Decisions were being made by the old administration without, in my opinion, the understanding of their impact and most... On the most important level, the students themselves. I'm really no different than most of the people in this room. Like you, I live in our district because I choose to. I really love our district and what it has to offer to everybody. Like you, I attend events throughout the area. The Valley Flowers, the Northern Lights Parade, the Fourth of July, the Ferguson Twilight Run, Ferguson Youth Initiatives, the farmer markets. I'm part of this community. Like you, I eat at the local restaurants. I shop at the local businesses. I go to the fundraisers. I contribute to local events. I'm embedded in our community. Like the parents in this room, I would never miss a parent-teacher conference or an open house. I provide food to the teachers for the parent-teacher conferences. I sell pizzas. I write paper to support the schools. I volunteer at the fairs, the movie nights, the breakfast with Santa. I've held positions within PTO. I'm an involved parent. I'm a member of our community, and I'm committed to our students. Now, like you, I vote. Most of the people in this room came to the polls back in August and voted for Prop A. You did it because... You may not have voted for or against, I don't know, but you did it because you truly care about the district. You did it because you love your community. You did it because you wanted to stay in the direction of our district. And last week, I made one of the hardest decisions I have ever had to make as a Board member. It was a decision that was not made in haste nor in malice, but a decision that I believe was in the best interest of the students of our district. I know you want direct answers as to why I made my decision, and you guys are going to hate this part, but because it's a personnel matter, I'm unable to respond specifically to understand... I understand your frustration. Dr. McCoy is a well-respected educator. Just remember applause a moment ago, okay? He is liked by many, as evident by the turnout he had. Over a period and a half... Someone kill me? Trust issues had developed between Dr. McCoy and myself. I felt the long-term success of our district was at risk. I serve... I serve on this Board with a high level of integrity. I receive no salary for this position. I donate hours of my time, and I ask nothing from this district, only to serve its citizens. My goal is to make this district the best it can be. I'm an honest, I'm open, and I report... And I expect the same. While the issue of Dr. McCoy is front and center right now, I believe there are greater issues that need immediate attention. As a parent with two children in the district and as a person who frequently speaks to the kids, parents, and to the teachers of the Ferguson-Floreson Schools, I am keenly aware what is in front of us. I believe that every student and every employee of this district has a right to respectful and nurturing school environment without disruptions. This should be a priority. I believe it is not. It's difficult to hear from teachers that are unable to teach because of a lack of respect, but it's entirely different when you hear it repeatedly from the students themselves. Students and parents have talked to me about doing something about the disruptive kids, and we're discussing it with administration. I am told there is no discipline problem because the dad does not support it. Financially, this district is severely stressed. Last year, we cut over $5 million from the budget. At the recommendation of the administration, we cut textbooks, after-school activities, tutoring, moved teachers from reading programs into the classrooms, reduced summer school, shifted money from one program to another, and we eliminated the Dean of Students position throughout the district, a position that addressed discipline problems. This year's budget is equally catastrophic. Last month, the administration gave the Board a financial update that showed we will be, based on current numbers and projected revenue, over $2 million in the hole. This amount included a projected $4 million of revenue as a result of the court mandated transfer program, money we have yet to receive. Without strong leadership, this... To solve this financial emergency, the next spring, the Board of Education may have to make even harsher cuts, and this needs to be addressed immediately. Our community and our students deserve this. There are many great stories and positive things about our district. My children would not be students in this district if I had not felt they were getting a quality education. We have a multiple... Multitude of students who have gone on to do impressive things, both personally and professionally. Those successes should not prevent us from openly and honestly discussing district problems. We need to celebrate the positives that we have, but also address the issues. It is also my belief that unless we do, we'll not be able to give every student in our district the opportunities that they solely deserve. Every student in our district. Thank you.
Mr. Martinez. Good evening, everybody. It's good... Great to see a crowd come to a board meeting. Honestly, we've never had one this size before for... While I've been on here. I see your passion. I understand your interest in the topic tonight. And to that end, we have made many arrangements to accommodate as many people as we possibly can tonight so we can hear your voices, we can understand your opinions, and we can listen to you. That's why we're here. We shortened the agenda. We've made the facility a much larger facility than normal, and we want to hear what you have to say. So, let's try and do this tonight with decorum, with a sense of order so that everybody can be heard and we can listen. But first, we do have to do the business of the district. We do have some agenda items that we have to take care of, and I'd like to get started on that here shortly. One thing that... Monday was Veterans Day. We do have a couple veterans on the School Board, as well as many veterans out in the audience tonight. If the veterans would stand, I would really appreciate it. We'd give them a round of applause for their service to our country. Please understand that the board meeting tonight prohibits us from commenting on public... From... Excuse me. From commenting publicly on items not listed on tonight's agenda. Therefore, it cannot be... We cannot respond... Ah. I didn't write this. I'm sorry. I didn't write it, so I'm having a hard time reading it. Well, I understand that we are listening to you, but we can't comment on what you have to say tonight. The Board will meet later and... Later this week to start further discussions, and we will let you know. We'll inform the public as soon as we can. I just want you to know that. Mr. Larue, do you have anything for us tonight?
The audience and the Board...
Closer to the mic. Closer, Larry.
Can you hear me?
Closer. Just pull it closer.
The audience and the Board should be proud of the way our students have reflected on how best to convey their feelings on this significant issue. Many students have sent their written thoughts to the Administration Center, and their thoughts have been delivered to the Board President, and we're expecting many more. So, we just wanted to let everybody know that the behavior and the way that the students have responded, thinking through their feelings, has been very significant, and we're very, very impressed and very pleased because this has been a good opportunity for people to express themselves, and we wanted you to know that.
Declaration of Candidacy. Three-term... A three-year term to Ferguson-Floreson School Board members Paul T. Morris, Robert Chabot, and Chris Martinez expire in April 2014. Declaration of Candidacy may be picked up in the office of the Superintendent at 1005 Waterford Drive, Florissant, Missouri, from 7:30 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. on days the district is open. Under Missouri law, the first day to file for candidacy is Tuesday, December 17, 2013. Filing closes at 5:00 p.m. on Tuesday, January 21, 2014. School district offices will be closed Monday, December 23, 2013, through Friday, January 6, 2014. The annual election for the Board of Education is on Tuesday, April 8, 2014. A person who wishes to file for candidacy for the Board of Education must be a citizen of the United States, be at least 24 years old, a resident taxpayer of this school district, and a resident of the State of Missouri for at least one year. In addition, the candidacy must follow these procedures. File a declaration of candidacy, line up for filing pursuant to District Policy 4013. Consent Agenda. The consent agenda presents the following items for approval under the Consent Agenda. Mr. Chabot, would you read the disbursements?
Payroll, teacher and non-teacher, $7,894,890.90. Operational disbursements of $2,320,146.23 for a grand total of $10,215,37.13.
I need a motion to adopt the Consent Agenda.
Mr. Morris, could I ask that we pull the closed minutes from October 16 so they could be amended on the agenda?
Yes, you may.
So, we have to... We have to adopt the Consent Agenda first and then do the amendment?
You want to pull that to adopt it later? You want to...
Yes.
We can adopt it now and add it to the Consent Agenda?
Well, yeah. The amendment I would like to post on those minutes is that the... Was talking about... Trying to read it exactly here. I'm not used to reading on the computer for a change. That the topic is not listed specifically, and it was the Superintendent's mid-year evaluation. And that way, we've got minutes that verify that we've followed our procedures and duties of evaluating our Superintendent twice a year.
Motion's been made to adopt the minutes from October 16. Do I have a second? Been seconded by Mr. Martinez. Mr. Chabot, would you call the roll?
Aye.
Mr. Brown.
Aye.
Mr. Schrader.
Aye.
Mrs. Hogshead. Secretary votes aye. Mr. Martinez. And Mr. Morris.
Aye.
The Consent Agenda has been adopted. Need a motion to accept the Consent Agenda?
So moved.
Been moved by Mr. Schrader, seconded by Mr. Ebert. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Consent Agenda is adopted. ESIP, or Early Separation Incentive Plan. The same choice.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the Board of Education. The administration is recommending the Board of Education offer an early separation incentive plan for the 2013-2014 school year. The ESIP plan would be offered to certified and non-certified staff that are eligible to retire under the Missouri Retirement System Guidelines. Details of the plan have been provided to the Board of Education. Under the plan, the notice to retire must occur by January 31, 2014. The district is recommending that 40 employees participate in order for the district to realize turnover savings. We would be happy to answer any questions you may have at this time.
I need a motion.
I need a motion.
I move we approve the Early Retirement Incentive Program.
Second.
Been moved by Mr. Schrader and seconded by Mr. Ebert to accept the Early Separation Incentive Plan. Any discussion?
I just have one question. Since there's... It doesn't go into effect unless we have 40 people signing up. Is there protections that staff will know that they do not have to file their state retirement papers before that? Because there would be a danger if they filed their state reports papers to retire, and then this does not go into effect, they'd have to then be in a problem if I retired, but maybe I don't want to if it doesn't go into effect. So, how's that going to handle?
Those protections will be in place. It's in the language of the documents that we've prepared for the employees.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries.
Thank you.
All right. We are to the portion of the agenda for audience participation. The Board allocates this portion of the meeting for audience participation regarding items listed on this evening's... Oh, excuse me. Thought I had it. Suggestions and/or questions. This time is up... We're going to move forward here in just a second. The... Tonight, we're going to have two lines that you can speak from to help expedite the people being able to talk, that the public... We want to hear from you. I do want it to be orderly this evening. Please conduct yourself as such. We can go to 11 o'clock at the latest tonight. That is the time by which we must close. Members of the audience who wish to speak to the Board are required to speak from the microphones, identify themselves, and limit their remarks to three minutes. Speakers will be informed when they have one minute left to speak, and then again when they have 30 seconds and when the speaker's time ends. In keeping with District Policy 4059 and Personnel Law, speakers should refrain from making negative comments that are personally identifiable. To comply with Missouri Sunshine Law and District Policy 4054 and 4059, Board members will not respond to comments made during the public comment period. The subject of the comments will be noted in the minutes and appropriately addressed by the district. I'd also like to thank Dr. Rance Thomas and Dr. Adrian Bland for helping us with the speakers tonight, and we greatly appreciate your efforts. Thank you.
Good evening. Good evening.
Hello?
Good evening. My name is Dr. Rance Thomas. I'm president of North County Church of Interracial Justice. I'm assistant to 22 churches in North County, diverse nominations, work the most racial harmony and social justice in North County. I have a long... In my organization, I have a long relationship with the school district, a wonderful relationship over the years, many years, in fact. I've worked on various committees, task forces, and councils in trying to improve the quality of education for students within the North County area and Ferguson School District in particular. If you allow me to speak, I will also allow you an opportunity to speak as well. As indicated, we're going to allow each speaker three minutes to speak. By the way, when I heard about Dr. McCoy being placed on administrative leave, I was in a state of shock, as many of you were. I couldn't believe it, in fact. I just talked with Dr. McCoy a couple of weeks prior to that, and he felt that things were going well. I have a wonderful relationship with Dr. McCoy, a wonderful friendship, in fact, as well as with the Board. I know a number of members of the Board as friends, and the Board as a whole, we work together well. So, I was really shocked and pleased that the Board as a whole is formed this evening to allow members in the communities to speak. I'd also like to inform you that we're going to tab you, as usual, three minutes. We have a tab keeper back here. And again, please, respect the decorum, proper decorum, and help us through this process. We're going to allow as many individuals speak as possible. And again, the Board won't respond directly to you, but they will take your comments into consideration at a later date in the decision-making. So, please feel free to make your comments, but please respect decorum. By the way, before you begin your speech, please present your name, state your name, and also your relationship with the district. We're going to begin with Mr. Jim Clark.
Good evening. Thank you, Board, for the opportunity to speak. I'm sorry if I'm not speaking loud enough. I'll try and hold this closer to my mouth so that you can all hear what I have to say. And it's a written statement, and it's addressed to the Board of Education. They have put Dr. Art McCoy on administrative leave because of, quote, "differences in focus and philosophy between the Board and the Superintendent," unquote. The Board's philosophy is stated in paragraph 2010 of the Policies and Procedures Manual. This philosophy has not been revised since May of 1998. I was on the Board at that time. Paragraph 2010 consists of a philosophy statement, a mission statement, and a vision statement. I believe this is the only philosophy statement that has been approved by this Board of Education and must be the philosophy they are referring to. It reads, "Ferguson-Floreson School District will provide an educational program for the students which will prepare them to be citizens in a democratic society. We recognize that the communities and the country they will eventually lead will be complex and constantly changing. As a result, it is incumbent upon us to develop in students the ability to think, a sense of responsibility, and a love of learning. The district is responsible for offering educational opportunities that recognize and celebrate diversity. This requires a curriculum that looks to the future as well as the past, and which is represented in a way that accommodates a variety of learning styles, interests, and talents. Above all, we, the Board and the district, believe that every student we teach is valuable and deserving of an education that will help the student to live a happy, fulfilling life." That is the district's and the Board of Education's philosophy, period. is represented in a way that accommodates a variety of learning styles, interests, and talents. Above all, we, the Board and the district, believe that every student we teach is valuable and deserving of an education that will help the student to live a happy, fulfilling life." That is the district's and the Board of Education's philosophy, period. The Board has the ability to change this statement if they have differences with it. But I'm not sure how many of the Board of Education members have really read this portion of the policy manual. With regards to differences in focus between the Board of Education and Dr. McCoy, I am not sure that I know what the Board of Education is talking about. I believe that Dr. McCoy is very focused on making sure the district retains its full accreditation with the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. MISIP 5 criteria is different from MISIP 4, and there are some challenges for the Ferguson-Floreson District to meet the MISIP 5 criteria. Thank you.
Just to clarify one aspect of this, when I was approached by the President of the Board to be the partner this evening, I got the impression that there was no possibility of working out the difference between the Board and Dr. McCoy. Otherwise, I would not have accepted this responsibility. After talking with them on three other occasions, I became more convinced that this was a possibility. So I'm hoping that this will be done in the very near future for the benefit of the district, students, and the community.
Good evening. My name is Bill Monroe, and I too, I'm the elected board of the City of St. Louis, a board member also, and distressed at what I see.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Testing, testing, testing.
Testing.
Can you hear this?
Yeah.
Thank you very much. I'm Bill Monroe, and I happen to be a member of the elected board of the City of St. Louis, St. Louis Board of Education. And I speak tonight not as a member of that board, but as a friend and an honest evaluator of this man. And as I look at this board, as I look at this composition...
Woo!
Woo!
As I, as I look at this composition, I'm distressed, and I've heard the word "respect" come out of the mouths of some of you. Please respect us as people who think.
Yeah.
And I say to you directly that race is a factor in all things. There, there is an excerpt that I have in my hand, and it quotes from the philosophy of Dr. McCoy. "Above all, we believe that every student we teach is valuable and deserving of an education that will help him or her to live a happy, fulfilling life." What about this philosophy that you disagree? And, and to sit here and say you will not answer, and you will give, you will not give us answers? You will give us answers. I, I, I'm happy to see a turnout. I wish we could get a turnout in St. Louis like this. I wish we could. But know this, this will not go away. This will not go away.
Thanks for those remarks, Mr. Monroe. My name is Redditt Hudson, and I'm also a parent in this district, just like, got two kids in this district too. You all have put all of our kids... Testing one, two. Testing one, two. Testing one, two. All right. I'm a parent in this district too. Start my three minutes over. You all have put all of our children at risk with your arbitrary decision based on the flimsiest of reasons, philosophical differences in focus that you can articulate if I gave you a chance. If I gave you a chance. And because there's so many people here tonight, let me tell you what we're gonna do as parents. Here's what we are entitled to, and let me educate you on the Sunshine Law. Let me explain something. Personnel matters are permissible under the Sunshine Law at your discretion, particularly if Dr. McCoy was to say, "Go ahead and show," or say what it was that you had distrusting me about, which I'm highly insulted by that. He's a personal friend of mine who I would trust with my life. If you're gonna make a statement like that, be man enough to stand on it, and tell me what you're talking about, the term "trust." Lastly, 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 and this is the most important thing, this is the most important thing, here's what we are entitled to, and here's what we will have. Under Freedom of Information requests Missouri Sunshine Law, because I anticipate, you know, I hope you're right, Dr. Thomas, that there's a way to bring Dr. McCoy back to us as the valuable resource he is, with the U.S. Chamber of Commerce was just here last month recognizing him as the educational game changer in Missouri. I hope that's right. I hope that's right. But if it's not right, if it's not, and the reasons, let's say, shift, change, what we'll need, because that would involve some kind of a failure to follow a directive, according to your policy, what I'll need is this, because only decisions of the Board acting as a body are binding upon the superintendent. Acting means a body, as a body means there was a vote, and there are minutes. We'll need the minutes of the Board meetings and what directives by vote. By vote and Board meeting that you have in writing for Dr. McCoy that he did not follow, I'll be giving you that request tomorrow formally in writing. Under the law, under the law, you are to respond to it in three business days. Open up and tell the truth about what you've done.
My name is David Bryant. I had the pleasure of meeting Dr. McCoy earlier in the year. I was invited to one of his schools to do a career fair, and I was very impressed with Dr. McCoy. It would be a sad day and a shame if you cut this man loose for reasons of indifference. If you have a problem with this man, then I think the Board should get with this man and try to solve the problem. Why would, why would you dismantle the system that he has going, and all of the students, they love him. They truly love him. And I really want to look at this thing from a Christian perspective. I want you all, when you go home this evening, ask yourself, when you get home this evening, where is the God in you? And once you ask yourself that question, where is the God in you, then you ask yourself the question, are we doing the right thing? Because the Bible says this, the Bible says, "Let every man be a liar, but let God be the truth." So if God is the truth in you, then I expect you seven, because the seven in the Bible is the number of completions. You need to keep this man on board so that he is still the father figure that he is when I met him for the first time. When I shook his hand, I knew right away that he was just a warm type of fellow, a warm man. The kids love him. Whenever they see him coming, they run right up to him. So all I want to do is say to you all, where is the God in you?
Hi, good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming out tonight, and thank you, Board, for this opportunity. As you know, I'm Chuck Henson, former Board member, and had the pleasure and being blessed to be a part of the Board that hired Dr. McCoy. I have a unique perspective because I had the opportunity to serve with six of you under the first two years of his administration. And so there are some things that I have heard tonight, some things that I've heard over the past two days, that is very perplexing and untrue. When I hear issues of mistrust over a year and a half, I was here. I was here. And I will tell you that the mistrust was not coming from Dr. McCoy, but it was targeted to Dr. McCoy. So much so, so much so, that I brought a program about building trust among this Board, and the President refused, refused to share it with the rest of the group. See, I have a unique perspective. I was here, okay? You hear what I'm saying? I was here, and I know. If Dr. McCoy, the philosophical differences, trust me, his philosophy was and is the education and the development of an institution of learning for this district. So if the philosophy is different, there's a problem, it's your philosophy where the problem lies. How is it so that just in this past spring, we all sat down, went through a preliminary evaluation, and approved this man's contract for the next three years? And now he has gone crazy? Now we don't need him anymore? You can't explain that to me. I know you can't explain it to these people. I was here. I was here. We approved that unanimously. Okay? And, and, and let me tell you the, the other part of this. Dr. McCoy makes over $200,000 a year. If you were to release Dr. McCoy, can the district afford to pay out a half a million dollars? How can you be thinking fiscally with regard to this? And I'll tell you what, and, because I know a lot of other people want to speak. I was outraged, but not surprised. I was disgusted, but not surprised. I warned you that this would happen. Time and time again, we had this conversation, and it always came down to a vote of five to two. Thank you, Mr. Schrader, for standing beside me. So, folks, let me tell you something, everybody. Listen, listen real good. In April, you need to come out, and you need to make some changes. In April, it's about change. April is about change.
Don't start till the crowd dies down, okay? About three minutes, all right. Good evening. Lovely evening it is. I just want to say, first of all, that I, I, I see that the Lord is moving, because given some, some dynamics of some things tonight and the order of things, the fact that this gentleman just came up before me, he kind of set the stage for some of the things that I would like to say. My name is Archilla Buford, and I am the parent of three children in this district. I have graduated one child out of this district, and I come before this Board this evening, and as an extremely involved parent, I respectfully demand the reinstatement of Dr. Art McCoy. I also respectfully demand to know what is the Board's, the Board's philosophical differences, because Dr. McCoy's philosophical beliefs are in line with mine and with the mission of this district. If this is about differences in educational philosophy, let me ask this question. Which of you hold a degree of philosophical, of the highest doctoral degree of philosophical education? Which, which of you? Because Dr. McCoy does, okay? I would also know which of you have attended Harvard University? Which of you? Now, parents, I have one minute left, and I'm gonna make this very quick. Boards, let me tell you, you've already seen them nervous and swarming, okay? They are everyday people, just like me and you, okay? The same way you have people on your job that may have a title but may not have the true competency to do the job. Guess what? We, people can be voted onto the Board the same way. They come with their, their issues, just like anybody else. I'm saying this to parents because you need to know, they are not up here, okay? We are the power in this community. And I have two more comments to say to you parents. The second one is, I had a Board, a former Board member tonight say to me that you are stupid, okay? They said that you don't come out and vote, and guess what? Guess what? If we're honest, if we're honest, we don't come out enough, and you better change that, other, that is how this happened. That is how this happened. Don't let it happen again.
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Maria Chappell Nadal, and I am one of the state senators for the Ferguson-Floreson School District. A couple of you on this Board are my... And I come before this board this evening, and as an extremely involved parent, I respectfully demand the reinstatement of Dr. Art McCoy. I also respectfully demand to know what is the board's, the board's philosophical differences? Because Dr. McCoy's philosophical beliefs are in line with mine and with the mission of this district. If this is about differences in educational philosophy, let me ask this question. Which of you hold a degree of philosophical, of the highest doctoral degree of philosophical education? Which, which of you? Because Dr. McCoy does, okay? I would also know which of you have attended Harvard University? Which of you? Now, parents, I have one minute left, and I'm going to make this very quick. Boards, let me tell you, you've already seen them nervous and swarming, okay? They are everyday people, just like me and you, okay? The same way, you have people on your job that may have a title, but may not have the true competency to do the job. Guess what? We, people can be voted onto the board the same way. They come with their, their issues, just like anybody else. So I'm saying this to parents because you need to know, they are not up here, okay? We are the power in this community. And I have two more comments to say to you parents. Second one is, I had a board, a former board member tonight say to me that you are stupid, okay? They said that you don't come out and vote, and guess what? Guess what? If we're honest, if we're honest, we don't come out enough. And you better change that, other, that is how this happened. That is how this happened. Don't let it happen again.
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Maria Chappell Nadal, and I am one of the state senators for the Ferguson-Floreson School District. A couple of you on this board are my friends, but we are in a disagreement right now. And I come before you today with Representative Sharon Pace, as well as Representative Gray. And I just want to speak to you for a moment, not only as a school board member, a current school board member, but also as your state senator. And let me tell you something. When you are facing an accreditation in 2015, and you dismiss your superintendent in 2013, that's a problem. That's a problem. Now, let me all, and I'm going to try to be as calm and collected as possible, and it's very difficult at times, okay? Especially on this issue. For you to lose sight of, of where you need to be by 2015 and to make this kind of decision is disastrous. Art McCoy was trying to help you. I don't know who's going to help you now. Art McCoy would allow for me to call him at 6 o'clock in the morning or at 11 o'clock at night. So that I could figure out how I, how we are going to protect Ferguson-Floreson next year. He is the only superintendent of all the 10 superintendents that I represent who gave me access to his intelligence. The only one. But let me not even finish there. He is the only African American who sat at a table two weeks ago in Jefferson City, the only African American. They did invite Clayton. They did not invite Hazelwood. Your superintendent was there. Your superintendent was at the table. Your superintendent was fighting for everything this district deserves. Now let me tell you, as a school board member, making this decision, if you want to talk about parental involvement, you got it now. You got it now. And now you're going to have to be accountable for it like the rest of us are. But let me tell you something. You need to understand that where we are is a crisis. I will tell you, every single election I've ever had, if you add them all up, does not even equate to the situation we're dealing with education in this community right now. And for you to make this decision, and I know barring if there's something completely illegal, I understand that, but let me tell you, he is not a man, in my estimation, that would do something like that, but he is a man of character. And he is a highly intelligent man. I'm not just saying this for anybody, because I don't even talk in public like this on local issues. But this is deserving of a public comment. This is very deserving, so please understand, I, I really hope that someone can articulate your needs, like Dr. McCoy. Because he's the only one to this point out of the 10 school districts that I represent, who's been able to articulate policy that we need in the future. And you know, there were only two districts that I was really, really trying to help out? One of them was yours. I'm just letting you know that having to balance out the needs of all of these districts and putting you at the forefront, it's a different day today.
Good evening, everyone. I'm going to read directly from the paper so that I won't stray away, because I'm very emotional and very disturbed this evening. My name is Lacretia Cox, and I am a citizen and a parent of the Ferguson-Floreson School District. I'm here today to show my support of my dear friend, Dr. Art McCoy. I've personally been very impressed with his strategic vision and leadership. I too have two children within the Ferguson-Floreson School District. I'm most impressed with Dr. McCoy's philosophy of putting children first in every decision he makes. It is evident that he enjoys interacting with the staff, students, and the Ferguson-Floreson community. Furthermore, I applaud his efforts for standing up for what he feels is in the best interest of the students of the Ferguson-Floreson community. Dr. McCoy is a well esteemed and accomplished educational leader in the entire state of Missouri, as you all well may know. And the youngest superintendent to ever have this great honor at the age of 33. I simply cannot imagine a board that would not want to capitalize on the strength and the educational leadership that he can contribute to the Ferguson-Floreson School District. I hope you can consider what you have put this district in at this point. And I too demand that you reinstate Dr. McCoy as the superintendent of this district. Thank you so much for having me today.
Good evening. My name is Viola J. Murphy. Better known as VJ Murphy to this district in which I taught 32 years. As a matter of fact, my picture is in your boardroom as one of the first African American teachers of the year. With all due respect to this board, per the letter that was sent out regarding Dr. McCoy, it stated that this board was dedicated to diversity and equality. May I ask, where is that diversity and equality on this board? What you see in this gym is diversity and equality. To me, if this district is about diversity, it needs to start with the Board of Education. For years, Ferguson-Floreson's district was diverse. Art McCoy is about diversity. Let me make it perfectly clear. He gets it. And it's about our kids. It's not about the politics. You could not ask for a more dedicated person with a vision for our children for higher education and the learning of every student. This man is who our children need. This man is our children's hero. He is in and out of these classrooms, working with the students that he's in charge of. Dr. McCoy is making sure that our kids feel good about themselves, encouraging every student to work towards success. He makes them feel that they're somebody. Art McCoy is more than a superintendent, he's a born leader. He's the only, he's one of the most intelligent individuals that I have had the pleasure of knowing and working with. He's a role model for our children. He has high standards for our kids. He tells them that education is an important factor in their lives, and is constantly, constantly encouraging them to learn. It takes a special person to reach our kids, to make them want to learn. Dr. McCoy has that ability. Art McCoy has the ability to make all of us feel like we're special. We as teachers look up to a leader who is leading us all in a manner that wants us to be the best of what we do teach. I'll finish in a minute. How many of you on this board, and I'm going to end with this, because I have plenty more, but how many of you on this board has taught a class? Maybe two of you out of seven? How many of you have stayed in a classroom all day with our kids? Not many of you. How many of you have visited any of the Ferguson-Floreson schools and participated in any lesson being taught? That's what Art McCoy does.
Good evening. My name is Dr. Arthelda Bush, and I am the chairperson of the Citizens Task Force on Excellence in Education. I'd like for you to see our task force and its supporters, so I'm going to ask them at this time to stand so that you may see the Citizens Task Force and its supporters. The Citizens Task Force is joined here today by hundreds of district parents, students, clergy, civic, and business leaders, and other district stakeholders. And we stand before you this evening demanding the immediate restoration of Dr. Art McCoy to his position as superintendent of the Ferguson-Floreson School District. We strongly decry the action of the board and believe it to be in the best interest of the students and the district that each member who voted in favor of such a devastating, irresponsible, and arbitrary action resign immediately. It is clear, it is clear that these board members have violated the trust of the public, have placed, have placed the district at such legal and financial risk and are not working in the best interest of students and parents in this district. Mr. Paul Morris, board president, has stated publicly that Dr. McCoy was placed on leave because of differences in philosophy. Dr. McCoy's philosophy is demonstrated every day as he shows that he treats every child as his own. And he provides them with the best educational opportunities possible while distinguishing this district as one of excellence. How could that philosophy differ so vastly from the board's that Dr. McCoy would need to be placed on leave? The board should immediately explain its position to the parents and the stakeholders who have elected him to office. They deserve no less. The Citizens Task Force has gathered more than 1,000 signatures here of people who are in support of reinstating Dr. McCoy. It is our firm belief that the six board members who initiated this action against Dr. McCoy are no longer suited for service to this district. And should they decline, should they decline to resign from their positions, rest assured, we will work tirelessly to ensure their defeat in upcoming elections.
Good evening. My name is Montheny Miller Jones. I too am a parent, housewife, all the things that the gentleman said that he was, I am too. And when I heard of this, I, I, I don't even know what to say. I was, I don't even know what clothing I had on, but I was standing in the administration office yelling, I don't know what, to Mr. LaRue. Put him back. Put him back where he belongs, because he is the pillar of this community. He is the person that when I, I've been through so much in this district. When I first came in this district in 1996, you know, it was, it was so much racism. It really was. And it still is. It really is. But the thing is, is that in order to make this go away, we have to continue to do this. We have to support our children. We have to support our school district, which we've been doing. I've never seen an amazing man like Dr. Art McCoy before. Whenever I'm up at the school, you will see the superintendent. How many schools can you go to in Missouri and see the superintendent roaming around? You know, whenever there's a problem, he's right there. It's like he bounced up. And if he says he's going to call you, I didn't wait it on him. I said, oh, it's 5 o'clock. He's not going to call me. My phone rang at 9:30 at night, Ms. Miller Jones. And I told him, I was just so honored that he called, that he made my night for me to be able to rest, because he cared enough to keep his word and to call. There's so many differences going on right here in this district, that this is the first time ever in Ferguson-Floreson that we have put a superintendent on administrative leave. I mean, what is going on here? What is it? He's educated, he cares, he has a philosophy that we all agree to, and we know that it's going to work. So what is the problem? What is it with the board? You say your parents, you say your, your husbands and wives, you know, this, this is everything, Dr. McCoy. To my family, he's everything. And like the gentleman said early, would give his life, I would give my kidney, my whatever he needs, he can have it. Because he's given just that much to me, to my family, and to this wonderful community out here. We have to be willing to change. Dr. McCoy has been trying to prepare us since he has come into the superintendent position to prepare for change. Let's change. Look into your hearts. Find out what it is that your differences is probably personal, and ask God to remove it. Say, remove it, Lord. And give Dr. McCoy back to the community, back to the school district. Thank you.
My name is Umar Lee. I'm a local writer and activist. I was educated in the Ferguson-Floreson School District. I went to high school right here. And to be quite honest, I was not totally up on the situation with McCoy and the board. I knew him when he was a teenager, but had lost touch. But I think Bill Monroe back here hit the nail on the head. I think there's a lot of issues going on, but the main issue, as it has always been in the Ferguson-Floreson School District, is race. From the time I went to this school, these schools, to the oldest Smith Elementary when it closed, to McClure North, the faculty was racially divided, the students were racially divided. And when I left St. Louis and moved to East Coast, and I came back, I found the same issues here in St. Louis. Let's not forget, we're here in Florissant. I see two black Florissant police officers there in the corner. Florissant fought for years to not hire any black police officers. Florissant Police had directors, direct directors from Chief Lowry to harass more than one black in the car at a time. To send a message, any blacks from Kenlock Berkeley or the city of St. Louis that were found in Florissant. The issue today with Dr. McCoy and the board is a part of that process. A part of the old Ferguson-Floreson School District and the new. The old trying to hold on to what power they have, to the old power establishment they built here in Florissant and fighting off the new. But the reality is, it's a beautiful thing to see all these people here today. But these people need to be on election day. The board needs to reflect the community. You saw in Jennings, Jennings had over 80% African American population, and Mayor, and Mayor Thorpe was still the mayor. I know a lot of people have moved out to Florissant and are still registered in the city of St. Louis, where they grew up, at their mother's house. But that time is over. It's time to take political power here in Florissant, starting with the school board, moving on to the city council, moving on to the mayor's office, to create a new day in Florissant, Ferguson, and North St. Louis County. Thank you.
Hi there. My name is Sharon, and I am a mother of students in Florissant. And I'm, I'm really puzzled here, because I, I did come for answers, and I didn't get any answers at all. And I'm, I'm just really sad to hear that. You know, you guys say that you feel that this district is at risk. At risk for what? At risk for what? We, we've, it's, like everyone has said, the philosophy- Uh, we, we've, it's, like everyone has said, the philosophy of Dr. McCoy, I, I would hope that it would be in line with you guys. If not, then what are your philosophies? I mean, who are you here for? Are these personal issues, or are these issues dealing with our children? Because our children is what, they're, they're what, they're, they're important. They're important to me, and I would hope that they'll be important to you guys. And I would hope that you would not allow any personal issues that you may have with Dr. McCoy to be, to put in front of what this district need. This district need help anyway, and then you're, you guys are gonna push away the help that you have? This man has connections with these children. When was, when was the last time the children stood up for a superintendent? I mean, he comes to our schools, fifty percent, at least fifty to seventy-five percent of the students know him by sight, and that's a very good thing. Because I can't think of any other superintendent, even when I went to school, where your children know who the superintendent is. He talks to our children about issues. My daughter comes home and, and he's at the schools at least once a month, at least. That's, that's wonderful, and you should want that in your district. He gives our children hope. What is it that you guys are wanting in a superintendent? Because Dr. McCoy is, he, he's awesome. He's awesome. And I don't know him personally, but I really love what he stands for. I really do. And I think that you guys really do need to come together and put aside these personal differences, and let's do what's right for our children because they are what is important. They are our future. And if we can't think about their future, then what are we thinking about? So please, think about that. You know, and that's, that's all I'm here for, and I really do wanna know why. Why? Our children wanna know why. And if, I mean, I understand if there is something illegal, then of course, you know, that's an issue. But if not, then we need to make something happen. Thank you so much.
Good evening. My name is Andrew Cox, and I'm standing here to show my support for Dr. Art McCoy to be reinstated as superintendent of the Ferguson-Florescent School District. I believe Dr. McCoy brings fearless leadership, a vision, and strategic plan to Ferguson-Florescent School District. Ferguson-Florescent has greatly benefited from his personal dedication to this school community. As a father of two children who one attends Lee Hamilton Elementary and the other the Early Childhood Learning Center, I'm standing here to express my full support for Dr. McCoy, and the reason why I send my kids to Ferguson-Florescent is Dr. McCoy. I have known Dr. McCoy for over ten years as an educator in both the public and private school sectors. I've worked with him and have experienced firsthand of several of Dr. McCoy's well-thought-out programs as related to education, both here at Ferguson-Florescent and from before. I feel very confident expressing my full support for him and his leadership ability. I have worked with him and supported his vision and policies as related to Sages, bridging the gap of heart, head, and hand, practical common core standard research, practice and communication for schools, and as a member of the No Child Left Behind Executive Leadership Council in Missouri several years ago, we shared a common goal, in the best interest of our students. But most importantly, like I said before, I sent my two children to Ferguson-Florescent because I trust Dr. McCoy. As superintendent of schools, he, I see him in the classroom, teaching children and educators alike. One example recently, I saw him, and he knows everyone's first name. He walks in, the students come to him, and he begins to recite the seven habits of learning with them. As a parent, Dr. McCoy has brought this district to new levels unachievable under other leadership. New attendance policies have raised student attendance across the district. There's been a robust curriculum in place. Rigor and achievement is the expectation now in the classroom. There is oversight and more principal accountability, which is good. School safety is the norm, and healthier school lunches are now provided. But most of all, the positive impact on education in the state of Missouri and the Ferguson-Florescent should reinstate him as superintendent of Ferguson-Florescent. If the school board does not rehire Dr. McCoy, the gains the district has made will be well in jeopardy, and Ferguson-Florescent will lose its leadership to another school district. He has built a solid foundation, is financially stable in his vision, and has a common core that is to his core and to our core, that community and family are the keys for the Ferguson-Florescent future. Thank you.
My name is Sally Stanton. I am a parent of kids in Ferguson-Florescent. I'm not here for Dr. McCoy. I am here with the concern of the accreditation of the school district. That's a big thing, and wow, the turnout here, should, we should have it in the schools when we have Parents' Night to meet the teachers, when we have Report Card Nights to know how our kids are doing. We have wonderful staffs, elementary to high school. My son, oldest graduated. My youngest is still in school. Never had better principal than Ms. Blam, right there for my child who needed the extra help. The high school teachers, right there for my son who needed the extra help and courage to get him through his high school years. This is amazing. You parents need to be more involved in the kids' education. I'm sorry this turmoil is going on. Do what's best in your heart. And God, yes, let's not bring God into it because we all believe in God. But what about Merry Christmas in your schools that you cannot have? What about Silent Night that the kids cannot sing in your school? You wanna bring God in? Bring God in, or keep him out. You decide what you's want, but the education is what you's need to think of. These kids need to be educated. They need their school accreditation. Laugh, that's why the accreditation is going down. Thank you.
My name is Kelly Gilyard. I am a proud parent of a recent McClure High School graduate. I served as a parent liaison for the district as well as the president of the Parent-Teacher-Student Organization for McClure High School from 2010 to 2013. I am a resident and a taxpayer in the city of Ferguson. Mr. Paul Morris, I recently learned that you once taught. I am a former student of this district and alumnus of Berkeley Senior High School. Can you hear me now? Can you hear me now? Can you hear me now? Okay. My name is Kelly Gilyard. I am the proud parent of a recent McClure High School graduate. I served as a parent liaison for the district as well as the president of the Parent-Teacher-Student Organization for McClure High School from 2010 to 2013. I am a resident and a tax- I am a former student of this district and alumnus of Berkeley Senior High School. I must say, I am truly appalled and disappointed in the ability for the board to effectively lead this, lead in an unbiased manner. More than any lesson- More importantly than any lesson that I was taught while attending the Berkeley schools, I consider the lesson in character to have been the most valued. I learned the value of dignity, decency, but more importantly, integrity, from my teachers. This recent act by the board seemingly lacks all of the above, with one exception, Mr. Paul Schrader. Thank you, and I commend you for standing for this student. Parents and taxpayers, citizens of this district, and for supporting Dr. McCoy. The board states that Dr. McCoy- The board states that Dr. McCoy was placed on administrative leave with pay because of differences in focus and philosophy. After receiving pressure from the Ferguson-Florescent community to disclose the nature of the differences, pressures I don't think you were prepared for, a second letter was made available. It states that decision was made lightly, was, decision was not made lightly, and that you worked over several months of the issues, which are not being disclosed is a personal matter. But you go on to say that your concerns were regarding compliance with board directives. So is it differences in focus and philosophy or compliance and directives? And since the issue could not be resolved to the point of leaving Dr. McCoy in office, then disclose to the Ferguson-Florescent community what your directives are. Perhaps we can be of assistance. You state that this decision was not racially motivated and that you have met with the St. Louis County NAACP North County Church- You also state that this decision was not racially motivated and that you have met with the St. Louis County NAACP North County Churches United for Racial Harmony and Justice and the county executive charge duty. These meetings, no doubt, came as a result of the outpouring support for Dr. Art McCoy and the welfare of the education of the students in this district. By meeting with these organizations after the fact is a simple form of appeasement to quiet the African-American community. This is unacceptable. The board also claims that this act is not racially motivated, then explain to the eighty-two percent African-American student population body and apparent that it is not. The most recent board election wasn't held in April. The one and only African-American board member was not reelected. Seven months after the election, which consists of all-white board, Dr. McCoy is placed on administrative leave. But your actions were not motivated by race. If the difference occurred over several months, then why place Dr. McCoy on administrative leave now rather than when the African-American board member was still on the board? It would not have been so obvious. If the board wants to, wants the support of the community- And if you are genuinely in concern to further the education of the entire student body of this district, then disclose your purpose, your objective, your focus, and philosophy, and get in line with your very own mission statement. Get the citizens involved. We do not want to shadow our neighboring districts and become undercredited. We have a board member on this board that has nearly twenty years of experience. You know who you are. I'm asking you to take the lead and do the right thing and reinstate Dr. Art McCoy as superintendent of Ferguson-Florescent School District. This is the right thing to do. Otherwise, there is an election in April, and just as we have showed up in numbers tonight, we will show up at the polls in April.
I go to McClure South Berkeley High School. Dr. McCoy was a friend of the district. I remember every day I went to the high school, and I would ask Ms. Fagan, when is Dr. McCoy coming? When is our next assembly? When I moved, when I moved to St. Louis from Los Angeles, California in 2012, me and my mom was in search of a new life. Seventy-five percent of my blood is Samoan. I've never witnessed so, so much potential in a young African-American, for a race that was undershadowed, for a race that's always been tortured and hated on for the beliefs that we share. Do you remember what the Bible tells you? Jesus tells all of his anointed people, he tells everybody, touch not my anointed. If it's a, if it's a racial problem, if it's a racial problem, what else did God say? Slavery is not of God. Forgiveness, forgiveness. If it was something he did, I'm sure it's something you can overlook. How many of us have not had any arguments with somebody? It's, it's, it's life. We're always gonna deal with something and have problems. That's the benefit of waking up and looking forward, because all you do is thank the good Lord and say, I've made it, and I'm gonna keep on going. Now, after spending my year and a half in, in St. Louis, Missouri, I realized something. After seeing McClure North, McClure, and Berkeley Senior High, yes, I call it Berkeley, we don't call it McClure, we call it Berkeley. I see the spirit, a spirit that Dr. McCoy helped, a, a spirit that Dr. McCoy helped build from the ashes of the ground. I'm one of the millions. I'm one of the supporters of Dr. McCoy. I'm one of the supporters of the Ferguson District, of, of Florissant, of Kenlock, of Berkeley, of every North County school that ever said they wanted Dr. McCoy. When I was walking down the street, about ten people asked me, are you going to the hearing? And I said, yes, I am. And they say, may God be with you. But I got a little message to send to the people, I got a message to send to the schools. The time is now where we got to stop worrying about racism. Did we not remember what Dr. Marla King said? Did we not remember what Jesus said? How are we gonna love on everybody when we're worrying about the race? It doesn't matter if you're black, white, Chinese, Samoan. It's about the, it's about the character. If you don't have character, how can you lead the students? I don't care if you do nothing else for the high schools, we're almost out in four more years, but what about your kids? What about your kids? Look at all these people who came out to make their opinion. What happens when you lose the faith? Where's the tax money? Where's the support? What happens when the world ends?
Good evening, board. Some thirty years ago, I've been involved in this Ferguson-Florissant School District. You've seen some problems, you've seen some major problems. The major problem is that when they did the DSEG program, they said the school district will be named Berkeley, Kenlock, Ferguson, Florissant School District. You got a board member that's been on, a, a board member that's been on there a length of time. I'm not in favor of that individual. Because that individual is the cause of what's going on in the Ferguson-Florissant School District while Berkeley and Ferguson was, Berkeley and Kenlock's name was dropped out of the school board. So I'm not in favor of that twenty-year member trying to get nothing together. But let me tell you something this evening, people. We have, don't even have to worry about this board. They have made their decision on what they're going to do. The issue here tonight is what are you going to do? That's the main thing. This school board member have, they have already, they, they talked to people other than the taxpayers. They went to Charlie Dooley Council, I mean, uh, Executive, Charlie Dooley, they went to the, all the other people, but did they call the residents and talk to the residents about Dr. McCoy? No, they did not. And some of these board members are the same board members that had an issue with Jeff Spiegel. With Jeff Spiegel, let's go back where it is, take it where it needs to go. Now, you got rid of Jeff Spiegel because he was, the school board members gave him so much money for his insurance and lifetime policy for him and his wife, okay? Now, you got rid of those board members and elected these board members that you got now. These same board members now are getting, I'm like the lady, the, the, uh, the, uh, okay. Now, the issue is that you elected this board member, these board members here to do the same thing to get rid of McCoy. This is what's going on. Now, you, now let me tell you a little joke and a little secret to all of this. Don't wait until April. You need to be getting someone together tonight to sign up for school board. That's what you need to be doing. Now, then it took the, uh, the, the Justice, Churches Justice United and all these people and whatever, these are the iss, these are issues. Don't worry about them because they can't vote. You, the taxpayers, all of us paying taxes, these are the people that's interested, who they should be talking to. But what did they do? They went over you all. The twenty-year member, she, they don't care about nothing. They don't care about nothing. It's all about Ferguson. What we really need to do is we need to be picketing some of the places of worship for these seven board members. That's what we need to be on on Sundays. Them seven board members, we got a problem. It's a major problem with going out here. And it's not gonna get any better, it's gonna get worse. But don't focus on them, let them go. Focus on you as members, taxpayers. That's what you need to focus on. December, somebody need to be signing up. Somebody needs to be signing up. And I'm not talking about former board members, I'm talking about somebody that knows what's going on. Somebody that's been here, somebody that has a, a opportunity to do something. Some of these parent liaisons that's at the school, that is part of the school, brother, you've been, you talked for twenty minutes over there about this. Okay, now, we need to do something and if we don't do anything, but just forget about this. And you residents, let's move on. Y'all need to get up here and register someone to vote. All this don't mean nothing, they turn their chairs from left to right. Left to right. That's all they doing, they can't care less. And also, I'll be through in a minute, I'll be through in a minute, doctor. The hidden agenda. The hidden agenda. Now, they made the, uh, guy the acting superintendent, but you don't know the real deal that's gonna happen here. They brought somebody in here from Francis House that they really wanna be the superintendent. But you need to find out what's happening.
We appreciate all of your comments, but in the interest of time, please allow other individuals to speak as well. We have a limited amount of time, so please observe that. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Deja Powell. I'm in high school, so everybody wants to speak for the students, let me do it. Okay. The man earlier said how, um, he's been there, I am here. So, Dr. McCoy, there have been so many things said about him, so many rumors, assumptions, discriminations, but why are we all here today? We all know and love Mr. McCoy. That's the thing, see, we all know him. He shows himself, he makes himself known, he makes his goals known and even his expectations known. He motivates us to do our best and be as proficient as possible. What is it exactly that he's doing that's incorrect? Somebody tell me, please. Um, is it maybe having a different perspective perhaps? If a board was supposed to have one mind, wouldn't it just have one member? I'm just saying. Dr. McCoy speaks for us, the public, the students, the parents, he's our voice, he's our opinion, our mind. And even if we're on a thin line, you know, being unaccredited, if he wants to bring in unaccredited students here, let them, that's what I've heard. But let them. At least someone believes in us, he has hope and faith in us that we will and can be great. And that's all we really need. Why should we be limited to our possibility? Maybe those schools don't do as good as they can because no one believes in them. But sometimes we just gotta start somewhere. One thing I especially wanna address today is graduation on the football field. I'm sorry. I've heard that Dr. McCoy thinks we should have it again at the St. Charles Family Arena. Why shouldn't we? Is it because we barely have any money? But see, this is what I was thinking about and what one of my teachers brought to my attention. We have parking, chairs, tickets, staging and all the extra assets of graduating three different days plus an unhappy crowd because of all the confusion versus all of the assets in one day divided up by three schools in addition to satisfy graduates as well as individuals invited. Speaking in my own point of view toward graduating on the field, I need more than two to five tickets. And more than one parking space because, um, my school has only four hundred parking spaces and we have more than three hundred seniors. And, um, if we made it this far through all of the struggling, the ups and downs and accomplishments, I believe we deserve to invite the people who helped us make it. I'm almost done, I'll begin. McCoy going that extra mile is enough motivation for us to do that for him. The time he puts into us, we can return the favor by doing what he wants us to do. We can study, we can learn how to learn, pay attention and do our best. He's been there for us when we weren't there for ourselves. And that's why all of us are here today, to give back what he gives to us. Hope, faith and our time especially. And even just to simply show you that we're here like you've been here for us. And we love you, Dr. McCoy, we stand for you and what you believe in. And I'm done for today, thank you.
Uh, let me say that I'm Charlie, I'm the county executive of St. Louis County. I'm interested in this because I'm the county executive and I care about our kids and I'm glad that you had the opportunity to change the venue so you accommodate these individuals, these parents. First of all, just looking around the room, something is not going well. Anytime you have a crowd this large, something is wrong, always. Secondly, let me be clear about this, we did not meet. What happened was, let me be clear. I called the, the chairman of the board to ask him information, we spent about five minutes on the phone or less. I asked him, "What was the change in the philosophy of the school why Dr. McCoy was not there?" He said, "It was a personnel issue." I said, "You know, Dr. McCoy's been a great leader in the community, a lot of accolades. The public wants to know if there's a difference in goals or perspective, could you explain it so everybody understands what is going on?" Because that is not what we've been told. A philosophy is one thing and a goal attainment is another. So again, that need to be explained, I hope you would do that at some point in time. The other thing, I want to be very brief, I've got about a few more minutes left, there, there is an issue here in leadership, there's no question about it. There's a difference of a philosophy and the philosophy is not with Dr. McCoy, it's with the parents of the school district itself. Apparently, there's not on the same wavelength. Because indicated, you said that he had done no wrong. If he had done no wrong, then what is the problem? If he, and one of the things that's most interesting about this, this is a school that is fully accredited. It's hot, great accolades, doing the right thing, going in the right direction with the right leader. Please explain the difference in philosophy, what does that mean? And if he didn't attain a particular goal or aspirations, or expectation rather, could you tell us what they are so we can be on the same wavelength? Thank you very much.
My name is DeMarco Watson, I'm a senior at McClure High School. I read an article from kmov.com stating that there is speculation that Dr. Art McCoy is being placed on administrative leave because of personal matters. The Board of, the Ferguson-Florissant Board of Education says, which is speculated that racial profiling is the cause. If this is the reason or a contributing factor, then I have a voice that deserves to be heard. I might know, I might not know Dr. Art McCoy personally, but I do know that he's a man of integrity through his actions and morals. He was, he present, he present himself as a trustworthy man, willing to support students from all social backgrounds. Dr. McCoy's mission is to give all students, not only in the Ferguson-Florissant School District, but also neighboring districts, an opportunity to get a high school diploma, pursue post-secondary education and make a difference to improve society. He's also a visual example of how a man's supposed to dress and act. Dr. McCoy never visited my school, not in proper dress code, I gave me a negative aroma toward him. He's like a lamp to the underrepresented, lighting the way to becoming a successful individual through good beliefs. I don't know the true reasoning behind the district placing Dr. McCoy on administrative leave, but I strongly disagree with that decision and it's her to say, "Bring back Dr. McCoy." Thank you.
Good evening, uh, my name is Kimberly Benz. I am a parent of four in the district, I have three elementary students and a middle schooler who will actually be here at McClure North next year. And I'm also a graduate of the district. I grew up here in Florissant and have lived here my entire life, except for about an eight-year period that my husband and I, um, lived in Riverview. We actually, we moved back to Ferguson-Florissant from Riverview because we actually, we had seen the writing on the wall while we were out there when it came to the schools. When I had a parent, this teacher representative actually telling me, "Your child is not going to succeed here." We knew we needed to move and I, so we came back home. Ferguson-Florissant has been home to me, like I said, my entire life. And our school district is not failing. That's one thing that the media has been trying to lump us with so many of the surrounding districts that are struggling. Ferguson-Florissant is not failing. And the way that Dr. McCoy has handled the transfers, I think, has actually been amazing. I know that my kids, I know that my kids, unless they are setting up a playdate and they just happen to find out that a student is not in their neighborhood, that is the only way that they're gonna know that those students are transfers. But with that said, I wanna actually, um, get down to some business when it comes to, you guys know that I'm a regular attendee of these board meetings. This is the largest crowd I've ever seen for obvious reasons. So I wanna get back down to the business such as the strategic plan. For the last few months, you guys have been talking about having a strategic plan. Due to financial issues, when you first decided to hire a strategic planning firm, I reached out to some of you and asked, "Why? Why when in so many years superintendent is the one who sets the plan, why are we hiring a firm?" I was told that it's so that the community and the board and the, and superintendent and administration and the teachers and everyone can come together and get on the same page and create a plan for the future of our district. You guys just cut the head off the snake. We now have a district with a board and a faculty and staff and students that have no idea of what's gonna be the future of our district because our superintendent is not in place. And no offense to Mr. LaRue, I know that you will fill the spot temporarily for, wonderfully, you've been very involved in the district and been here for years, so no offense to you. But Dr. McCoy was the one who was a part of setting up that plan. So with that said, I'd like to ask the board to please reinstate Dr. McCoy and give this strategic plan a chance to be implemented, to see what it is. And then secondly, if some of you may also not know that the, that Dr. McCoy also set up a steering committee for Ferguson-Florissant Foundation. It was gonna be a group to reach out to businesses in the community to raise funds for academic purposes. I don't, I'm on that steering committee and I don't even know where the direction of that is. Thank you.
Good evening to you all. I'm a concerned citizen, I identify myself as Yeshua's daughter. I have a couple of questions for you. I'm really concerned for the future of our children. I had, I have two wonderful children that went to Robinwood Elementary. I have a son that went to Cross Keys. I'm very concerned for our future of this, for the future of this school district. What is the new philosophy for the school district since the old one doesn't work? Is the district, I'm also concerned, is the district being divided from schools from the south? I also have a concern about the young scouts. I also have a concern about the Young Scholars Program, will that continue and how long will this program last? And I also, all the programs that Dr. McCoy implemented, will they continue? Is normally, Normandy School District be, becoming a part of this district? Those are a part of my concerns. The future lies with our children and we need to do what's best for them.
Good evening, my name is Kenneth Hubbard. I've been a resident of Ferguson since nineteen seventy-eight. When I first moved out here, it was predominantly white. Our after-American kids, they didn't get the proper education that they should have gotten. Under Jeff Spiegel administration, he didn't do nothing for the district. And as far as money, as far as money, it was a money problem then. Art McCoy, Dr. McCoy came in five years ago. We had, me and my wife had dealing with him personally. I consider him not only as a friend, but as a brother. This man done more for us than any superintendent they have had in this district. Because my son was a senior and he needed a couple of credit, they was planning on keeping him back at the new high school, Berkeley South. He wouldn't let it happen. He called my son at home and talked to him for over an hour on the phone because he wanted to know what was going on. No, I see the problem. The problem is not with Dr. McCoy, the problem is that, right there. I thought Ferguson was going in another direction, it looked like we're going back in the sixties with the chains. Take the chains off our wrists. This is two thousand thirteen, we don't need that. All six of y'all need to go. That's my personal opinion. If Dr. McCoy came on, we had people of color sitting right there where y'all at? Where they at? Where they at? No, you can't make us believe that Dr. McCoy is the problem because he is not. We, the people, we the people demand that y'all go, not Dr. McCoy. Because our young black males need a role model. They got it in Dr. McCoy. He's respectable and they could go to him anytime they wanted to talk to him. No superintendent in this district have ever done that for our black young men. And I'm not discrediting our young females, but it's our black men, teenagers that need to help. And that man is a positive role model for our young teenagers. So no, you don't know how we feel and you can't help us. You know, and all that personal thing you say you got against Dr. McCoy, we don't give a damn. Y'all need to go. And that's just the way it is. No, Dr. McCoy not gonna go, because whatever we have to do, we gotta go back in the sixties for boycotting the schools, the administration, whatever, that's what we need to do to keep this black man in this district, because we need it for our education, for our black kids, because we've been cheated for how many years? Over six thousand years. Enough is enough. And that's the way I look at it, thank you.
My name is Cornelius Barnes. And my name is Pierce Bryant, we both attend McClure High School, we're both seniors. Um, and we've got something to say. I'm gonna let Cornelius show or say what he has to say first, and then it's gonna be my turn. Dr. Art McCoy, I don't think you guys heard me, Dr. Art McCoy. M C C O Y. M, a minority leader fighting for a momentum, a monumental movement. C, cool cat, causing peaceful chaos for a cause. C, crafting college-bound courageous kids. O, an opportunist operating orderly. And Y, youth yearns for your help. And for the only person that I've noticed that's been taking notes, I appreciate you because I know that me being a human being, I'm not gonna retain all this information. So just for you, I appreciate you the most. And also, I'm just gonna leave you with this so that your fellow colleagues can also look at this and remember. So, here we are. I know for a fact that you all sitting right here right now, would have never thought you'd be sitting where you're sitting right now, but guess what? You are. And um, it's because you're trying to take my superintendent away. I don't appreciate it, okay? Um, so, let me ask you this. You're gonna put my superintendent on a suspension, okay? Um, and then you're gonna have someone else, where's the assistant superintendent? What, why is he not taking action? Um, I mean, it's chaotic, okay? It's chaotic. So, you all are the Board of Education, correct? The Board of Education. So, how about we make an educated guess, correction, an educated decision, okay? About my superintendent, and let's bring him back. So as you guys go back and deliberate at your table, nice long table that you all sit at, let's make sure that we're making a good decision that's gonna affect kids and students and parents down the road, okay? That's all I have to say. Let that sit. Thank you very much, and we approve this message.
Hello to the board, my name is Shandra Myers and I'm a parent of a student here at McClure North High School. And my daughter graduated from this school, she's now a double major with her degree on her way to get her masters in Houston. I'm proud of my daughter and my son. I am, right now, to be honest, my heart hurts. My heart hurts over this issue. Dr. McCoy is just an exceptional individual. I don't know him personally, but from the board meetings I've been to, over at McClure South Berkeley, at McClure High School and here, Dr. McCoy is nothing but exceptional. On the way here, I felt like, instinctively, I felt like your decision is already made. I really did, but I couldn't just not show up because my voice is gonna be heard anyway. I really, I was here earlier today, I took off of work to sit with my, my son through his classes. And I heard one of the students say, I'm so sad over Art McCoy, over Dr. McCoy, just over what's going on. He cares about us. All of you, when you were younger, did you have someone that cared about you, that meant something to you, that was an exceptional adult that you looked up to? And if for someone to just remove them because they didn't follow a directive, or their focus or philosophy didn't seem so in line with yours, that's when you talk, that's when you work things out, not when you dismiss someone. And I really think that a change needs to happen. And I'm gonna say this, it might not resonate with many people right now, but maybe when you're at the little dollar store or wherever you shop later, you might think about it. Keep a quarter, a dime, a nickel and a penny in your pocket at all times to remind you that change is on you. Okay? It's on you. Change is on you, on each of you as an individual. You need to hear my voice. I am asking, I am demanding that Dr. Art McCoy be reinstated into his position. As superintendent for my son, for these people's children and for everyone who couldn't make it, I am asking that, I'm demanding it. I am so, my heart is beating hard, this is something I'm passionate about. I don't know what triggers your emotions, each of you, but my emotions are way skyrocketed. I could propel myself over past all of you right now just on emotion. I am so filled up over this issue. And then to come here and to be told that we're gonna get to talk but we're not gonna get a response, if someone is taking the minutes like I heard and that you all are gonna deliberate afterwards and respond later, my phone number is three one four two four nine six six five eight. Again, it's three one four two four nine six six five eight. I need a phone call. I want someone to call me after you think about what we said here tonight. Call me and tell me why, what about his focus and his philosophy did not align with the board? Tell me what directive he didn't follow. I want to be clear, I want transparency, I want clarity, that's what I want.
Okay, uh, good evening board members and members of the community, my name is Vicki Mentor. I've had five young adults go through McClure North, they've all gone off to college, off to get their masters degrees in architects or managers, they're teaching in Japan. I'm asking, I am here to ask that you reconsider your past action and reinstate Dr. Art McCoy, McCoy back into the, back into his place as superintendent of Ferguson, Florissant School District. We know all about his awards and all the great improvements that he has made here at, at this school district. He has raised graduation rates under his leadership. He has improved attendance ship here, I think ninety-three percent here at McClure North, at McClure, and ninety-six at, at Berkeley. He has, he has increased college attendance rates by three percent under his leadership. But mostly important, you need to reinstate him because he is loved by the teachers, the students, the administration and the parents. It is not uncommon to, to have him among us, reading to elementary school students, making his presence known in the middle school and high school, having an open door policy to parents, empowering them by acting on their concerns. Becoming an active presence in our community by talking to businesses, owners and also including visiting churches and visiting my church. His philosophy matches my philosophy. And if his philosophy doesn't match your philosophy, then you don't match mine either and you don't match, you don't match the rest of us. So that is why I'm talking to the community. Because we need board members who match our philosophy, leading our district. Remember again, in April, three seats will be coming available. And it falls upon us to make our feet, to move our feet as our mothers and grand, and grandmothers did back in the old days, and get ourselves to our local voting votes and to let board, board members who reflect our philosophy. If you're not registered, tomorrow, go to your local DMV or go online, it is free and it is, and it is painless and registered. Your voting chip is your voice. Do not be silent anymore. Because I don't know what was the breach in regards to compliance with the board direction, I cannot speak on that. But I do know that Dr. McCoy was a good person and that he worked hard for this district. And that outweighs anything that, that can be against the board. So what I say to you is I wish you peace and then I pray that you prayerfully take what has been said to you today and that you think on that and that, and that you reinstate Dr. Art McCoy. Thank you so much.
Good evening, I'm the mayor of the city of Berkeley, a significant part of this district. I'm gonna be blunt with you. I sit in that position and when only one person makes a statement, not the whole board, if already made their mind. We had a conversation when I walked over here and I didn't believe it. Have you heard of the Tea Party? See, the Tea Party don't believe in government, these gentlemen don't believe in education. And, and the gentleman with the red tie, I'm sure that he needs to take a look in the mirror and his disposition. Because it's very clear, see, I'm not here to ask for Dr. McCoy's position, because I would not want to take his position under these seven. What we need to talk about, how do we correct the educational system? Because of this, you heard the senator, we gonna lose our accreditation. How we gonna stop it? Do you know what percentage of accreditation has to do with the superintendent? And a superintendent that's gonna be terminated? And they don't care. Because they're not concerned, because guess who's gonna be hurt? Our kids. And since it's our kids, they're not concerned. Why don't they answer? We elected you. Why can't each one of you individually take the courtesy and make a statement? Why do you allow only one? That's insulting. And none of you should go home today and consider yourself a board member. It's almost impossible to destroy a school board and a system without the board. And this board deliberately, just like the Tea Party, is destroying our school system. And they do not care. Because I would be surprised how many of them have their kids in our district. And if any of them have their kids in our district, they will probably soon take them out. Because listen closely, this ain't about April election. This is not about Dr. McCoy. This is about the stability of this region. And y'all allowing them to destroy our city. And starting today, this ain't, see, they, you know what they gonna think? They think after tonight, all y'all gonna wait. Because y'all know how black folks do. You know, y'all holler, scream, but just just sit, don't say nothing, let's be calm. And that's what they doing. They just being calmly listening, one nodding, one turns to the right, one turns to the left. The one here, second one, he been looking at his phone, at his clock, said, damn, I be glad we're in eleven o'clock. So I can go home. As soon as we go home, y'all, if y'all don't come back tomorrow, the next day, the day after that, kiss this district goodbye and McCoy will be a superintendent somewhere else. Do you hear me? And just think, why would you wanna be a superintendent under the Tea Party?
Good evening, gentlemen, my name is Amelia Schultz, I have three children in the school district and I've graduated one. It's actually hard to stand up here right now because frankly, I'm so embarrassed by a lot of what's gone on before. And I'm just gonna apologize for the people who did not show civility in their dresses, their remarks to you. I know where everybody's very up in their feelings, but we can all be civil in what we say. The people who love Dr. McCoy, Dr. McCoy sent out a note last August asking us to vote because our school district is broke. That did not pass, I don't know where those people were. I did vote for it. I'm concerned as a parent, and I don't know if people here know who was behind approving all of the Normandy transfers. Frankly, I'm, I am concerned with, with all those transfers. We are a school district that's already has, have a lot of financial difficulties. Normandy has, I'm sorry, I get three minutes, can you please show me common courtesy? Normandy is refusing to pay any money for those students. So, at least from the last letter that Dr. McCoy sent. So we are now supporting students, four hundred or how many students, on a system that was already running at a large deficit. We also, my students who are in class, are in classes with thirty, thirty-one, thirty-two students. That's not beneficial to, for my student. And that's not putting my student first. And that's not putting my student first. I'm not sure who's in charge of that and whose issue that is. But I do stand for you saying that I think that that's a problem and that we need to put our students first and that's where our focus should be. Thank you.
I wanna address a young lady. My name is Shawn Wood.
Please be mindful of others when they speak, listen, and you have an opportunity to say what you want to say as well. Please, so please be mindful of those who are speaking.
Well, I mean, I wanna start off with charity starts at home. If, if we can go out and cook and, and have charity all over the world, I don't know why we can't have charity for the kids in Normandy. So, on that note, I mean, a couple of these guys, I thought I had a friendship with, but I realized soon that it was not a friendship because we were not aligned in the same pattern of thinking. So what I wanna address this crowd at it is saying is, this board has made up its mind. So what we have to do as, as a community is come together, stick together. I got petitions made up to get this board recalled. And if we can't get them recalled, we can vote them out in April, especially Mr. Martinez and Mr. Chabot. Mr. Chabot is the ringleader of what's going on here. Martinez is following suit. So I'm telling you guys right now, with those two names, they're up for election. Let's get them out of here. I don't think Paul Morrison is up for election. But those guys need to go because one of those guys, when they were running for the board, he, his, his statement was, my job would not to be in line with the superintendent, but would be to conflict with the superintendent and his way of thinking. Before he was even elected, and I knew then, I yanked his sign up out my yard. And I said, I can't, I can't be with this guy. You know what I'm saying? I tried not to make race an issue. If he was a good guy, our kids went to school together. Hey, if you're a good guy, you're a good guy. But if you're racist, you're racist. And the way that you guys are moving and the way that you guys are acting, the way that you guys are hiding, it's the good old boy network. You guys need to go. My time is up. Look, three sixty. Okay, we need three hundred and sixty people to sign this petition. And we, we got the signs already made up. I'm going out. So when you finish up with the meeting, we'll be outside for you to sign this petition. We have to give this board recall.
Hi, my name is Lisa Everett. I am a graduate of McClure North. I have a daughter at McClure North and a daughter at Cross Keys. I'm a product of this school and some of the school board members were my teachers. And I'd like everyone to remember that it's the teachers that the students remember when they graduate from high school. When I think back to my education here, it is Mr. Schrader letting us call him at home to help him with math. So we could get help. It wasn't, I can't even tell you who the superintendent was. They didn't make a mark on my life. I am not saying Dr. McCoy is for the district, against the district. I have no opinion right now because I don't know what these people up here know. I do know how much work it goes into being a school board member. I've looked into running for school board and it is a lot of work. And I would like to thank every one of the board members for taking the time to do the job that I don't feel that I have the time to do and for sitting up here, taking what this crowd has stashed out to you and still making the hard decisions that you have to make. So, so as a parent, an alumni, I wanna thank the teachers of this district for being the ones in the classrooms, being the ones with my child day in and day out and educating my child because they are the ones that are making a difference in my children's life. Just like teachers on this school board that were in this building twenty years ago made a difference in my life. So, please do what you feel is in your best interest. We voted for you so that you could do what was in our children's best interest. And thank you for being here because I know every one of you knew the repercussions of the decision you made and you knew it would be a hard, hard thing to do. But you still did what you felt was in the best interest of my child. So, you know, I have heard a lot of people in here talk about black and white and racial issues. And I would like to re, I would like to remind you that my child's the one that's the minority in this district now. My child is the minority. And I would like to know which children you want educated? Your child or my child? Or is it about all the children? Then those of you out here, please don't exclude my child because right now, that is why I am a voice here. Because a lot of people here have said African-American children. They have not said all children. Thank you.
Once again, once again, I'd like to remind you that everyone has an opportunity, once again, everyone has an opportunity to express his views or her views. So again, they may differ from your own and still have the opportunity to express them. So please be mindful and respectful of others' views.
Hello, my name is Cheryl Coleman. And I would just like to speak on Dr. McCoy. I heard the news on the TV, in fact, and I do have children and relatives that went through the Ferguson-Floreson School District. And I am an ex-teacher that was railroaded out of my job. And so I can recognize it when it's happening here. Some of the same phrases were used, some of the same terms were used. And of course, the people that made this decision about me look like you guys. I also wanna say that, okay, the world is changing and we are becoming more diverse and things are a little different now than they were in the past for, for the city of Ferguson-Floreson and the district and everything. But we got to learn to respect being educated from people of color. We got to learn to be, to respect people that have power that look like me. You know, we got to learn to respect that and accept it. And that, and accept that they can do a good, excellent job. And you got to give Dr. McCoy a chance and give him, reinstate him and let him do his job. Thank you very much.
How you doing, everybody? My name is Laveil Martin. I'm a senior at McClure High School.
My name is Dominic Jackson. I'm a sophomore at McClure High School.
Now, I did write something down, but I feel like I should speak from my heart. That's the best. So, I just wanna ask you on behalf of myself, all the students in the Ferguson-Floreson district and the parents, what are y'all doing? Why would y'all deprive us of having a good high school experience? I mean, y'all just took something away from us that we was just believing, like, we was just starting to grow as, as students, especially a black commodity as young men. Now, y'all sitting up here in y'all fancy suits, but I wanna reassure you guys of something. Myself and this gentleman here, we are members of an organization called Men on Business, which would not be possible without McCoy's. All right? I know that there are some race issues, but it's not a black or white thing, it's a right thing. Now, we gotta get over this racial hump. And I think y'all don't like the fact of what Dr. McCoy was doing. So that's why y'all made the race decision. Y'all acted on impulse. Y'all did not come together and make this decision. It's seven of you and you mean to tell me y'all made one decision based off all y'all brains put together? Well, I'm here to tell you, seven wrongs don't make a right.
All right, I'm gonna take my time. My question to you as a board is why? How many of you stood at our school on the first day of school and greeted students as they went into school? How many? None. Dr. Art McCoy was there. Me personally, with no disrespect, you guys are chasing the dollar signs. You've gotten your education, we would like our chance to get ours. See, you think you understand us, right? We matter ten times more than you do because we make this school district what it is today. Okay, this to y'all. Look at these seven. Six, they said seven. It takes six of them to do one job. And we only got one Dr. Art McCoy. And he's one and he does his job. Great. But it takes six of these board members to do this job. If we lose Dr. Art McCoy, this board should make themselves useful and not even get mad. I'm gonna tell you why. Because this is our school district. Our school district. Not their school district. They just make a decision that they think is okay. Volunteer, huh. What I mean is, I've succeeded, and I'm gonna go off with this, I've succeeded with Dr. Art McCoy, but I wouldn't succeed with this seven or this six on my best days.
Good evening. My name is Laverne Mitchum and I am a resident of Ferguson-Floreson School District. I am in my twenty-seventh year as a counselor in the St. Louis Desegregation Program, also known as the Voluntary Transfer Program. I come before you as a citizen deeply concerned for quality education, not only for our students in Ferguson-Floreson, but a quality education for students throughout this country. The recent action of the Ferguson-Floreson School Board in which Dr. Art McCoy was placed on administrative leave is very troubling. I have worked with Dr. McCoy on a professional level for several years. I know him as a visionary and leader of integrity and strong convictions on providing a quality education for all students. The board has publicly stated there's a difference in philosophy and focus between the board and Dr. McCoy. I find that statement and that reason for this action not only puzzling, but questionable. As a board, you have stated that you sometimes have to make difficult decisions in the best interest of students. Dr. McCoy is known throughout the state of Missouri and nationally as one of the most qualified and competent superintendents around. As a resident of Ferguson-Floreson, I am aware of the numerous initiatives, programs, and efforts in educational advancements that have been implemented for staff and students under Dr. McCoy's leadership. I believe Dr. McCoy's philosophy and focus, simply put, is to provide leadership for Ferguson-Floreson students in which they will enter the workforce prepared to take their place and exercise their talent, gifts, and abilities, having received an excellent education in Ferguson-Floreson. I am appealing to this board as a resident and taxpayer to reinstate Dr. Art McCoy immediately.
Hi, my name is Keisha Griffin. I have four students. I've been dealing with Ferguson-Floreson School District since two thousand and five. At one time, I was not able to pick up the phone or email my superintendent. I go through, may God rest her soul, Dr. Savannah Young. When I wanted something done, I couldn't pick up the phone and I didn't even know who the superintendent was. So I would go to Savannah Young, I would go to Molly Lyons, I would go to Nicole White Sale. These were people that I had to deal with because I had no connection or no go-to person when my answers to my questions couldn't be met. I met Dr. McCoy. I was angry. I didn't know who he was. And he pulled me to the side, gave me his card. And from that moment on, if I had any issues about anything, he, he made a bridge where we can go to our teachers, we can go to our principals, but we were still able to use him as an outlet. And he would point us in the right direction, the right resources that we needed. I would like for him to be reinstated because he's been a help to my last three. I have two in McClure and I have one in North. And he's been nothing but fair to me and my family. And that's all I have to say.
Hi, my name is Jordan Dahl. I go to Cross Keys Middle School. And to me, you guys did not take away a superintendent, you took a role model away. If he grew up in the neighborhood that he, that he grew up in, that means we can, we can be as successful as he did. If, if you guys do make the decision to bring him back, I'll be surprised if he does come back. Because you took him, you made, you put him on leave for something that you guys think that you're right about, which really wasn't even fair for him. So I think, I think, and I think other people think that you guys should actually bring him back. Because he helped a lot of people, like when I was in seventh grade, he helped, my grades were really low. I went to Smart Academy, which he decided, which he made up. And that got, got my grades up enough for me actually to pass the seventh grade to go on to the eighth grade. So I think that his philosophy about what he made up was actually right and your stuff is kinda messed up. I don't think it's actually fair. That's all I gotta say.
Hello, everyone. My name is Cherie Spring. I know a lot of you on this school board and there is only one man that I can stand behind tonight, and that is the man who voted no to suspending Art McCoy. And I, as a former elected official, personally know Art McCoy as an excellent man, as an excellent role model, as an excellent educator. And he is for all of our kids. All of our kids. Our kids deserve Art McCoy. And if you will not reinstate him, we will not back down. The citizens of this community will not back down. There was one person who supported him. So, one person.
Good evening. My name is Stephen Peebles. I am a proud nineteen eighty-seven graduate of McClure North Senior High. I am a. I am a minister, I am a mason, I am a parent of two children in this district. I first only came out tonight to listen and not to speak up. But before I address the board, I want to thank Mr. Hudson for what you said you were gonna do, and you can count on my support. The person who calls me to have words tonight is Mr. Morris. And I would like to start off by asking a question. With your opening dialogue, were you campaigning for your job? Because everything you stated was for what? Was for not. Basically trying to prove your virtues standing behind the decision in which you made. You are supposed to be the voice of the people. You do not represent me. You did not ask me, you did not have my voice, you do not speak for me. Secondly, you spoke on trust issues, and those trust issues, if I was correct in my understanding of what you said, basically stemmed around the four hundred transfer students from the Normandy School District. I want to ask you, does not, sir, I'm kinda, your attitude in the red? I'm a grown man and a man of God. All children have a right to an education. And I want to leave you with this statement. As a Christian minister, Romans eight and twenty-eight says, "And we know that all things work together for the good to those who love the Lord, whom are the called according to his purpose." So that which you purpose for evil is going to be transformed into good for Dr. McCoy. Because I'm gonna tell you what my purpose is tonight. My purpose is to stand here tonight to give you a vote of no confidence, and I'm gonna ask each one of you to stand up and call for a recall of six of these board members, with Mr. Schrader being left behind. Thank you.
Well, hi, I'm Alicia Shivers, I am a future, I am a senior at McClure North High School in for the class of two thousand and fourteen. I'm not gonna be biased towards the board because I don't know what your decision is, and I don't know Dr. McCoy personally. But I know in our community, we have been searching for a strong black male role model for our community, period. Not even just for our males, but just for our women too. I sat there in the front row when he came to this district. I've never sat in the front row at an assembly, not for a regular principal, not even for a teacher, but for Dr. McCoy, I sat in the front row. Because I felt the voice and the power of him, and I understand that he wants us to succeed. Besides my own family, he made me want to pursue a career in pre-law and become a lawyer to fight for people's rights. I understand that y'all have, that y'all probably made your own decisions, where everybody has differences. If one of your board members, if one of them next to you had a difference, would you vote them off? Or would you keep them sitting right by you and you try to work it out like Dr. McCoy was probably trying to do? Now, I don't know the decision, I would like, I don't know the reason why you're part of him, I would probably like to know, and I know the rest of us would like to know. But all I got to say is please give Dr. McCoy back to just, not just me, but to our community, period.
Hello, my name is Therese Rucker, I go to McClure North High School. And what I have to say is that I remember Dr. McCoy came here and he spoke to us, and he gave us words of knowledge, and everybody knows at this point that he's a very intelligent man. And unlike most people with PhDs and degrees and stuff, he didn't talk to us in a condescending manner. He didn't look down on us, he didn't look at us like we were inferior, like we were filth. He actually gave us good advice and taught us how to become like him instead of just standing there looking at us and judging us. And you talk about how this school district is in turmoil and how it's on the verge of breakdown, but yet you're gonna get rid of one of its greatest role models, somebody who inspires and motivates us. So how selfish can you actually be to sit here and take away our role model? Somebody who we look up to, somebody who we love, somebody who inspires us to be who the best that we can be in a time of turmoil when we need him the most? You guys don't come here and talk to us, I never see you a day in my life.
Hello, my name is Jalen Roberts, I go to Ferguson Middle. And today, last week I heard that Dr. McCoy was getting kicked out of the superintendent row, which I met him back in sixth grade, and the way he talked, and the way he speaks, said, and seeing a black man that can do this and be motivational to all kids in any type of school district or what, and seeing the board here, I don't feel no sympathy about y'all today. Because y'all getting rid of a man, Mr. McCoy, who worked hard, went to school, and knowing his life story, what he said, said about his family, his mother, which was a very sad story. And just giving that away, what is the, what is the problem with y'all with him? Because seeing him, he's the sweetest man you ever meet. And I seen people, I seen people there, I seen teachers and other superintendents in my old school that has been more meaner, not cared about no student. I've been in Ferguson Middle for three years and seen everybody that has been educated and went through and became successful in their lives. I have seen all my teachers that have really shown me the way, and seeing him show me the way. I came from a district that made me think I was lower in nothing, I couldn't do. I had doubts about myself, and seeing Dr. McCoy, he made me think I'm powerful, I'm a person that can become a businessman, a mogul, anything. And seeing you in the red tie today, you looking at me with so disgust. But I am not letting that happen today, and that's it, and this is what I have to say today. And Dr. McCoy will be back, and he will, thank you.
Well, hello there, how are you doing today, board? My name is Janine McAllister, and I have two children that's in the Ferguson-Floreson School District that started at grade school, and which is, one is now, uh, one is now a junior, and the other one is a freshman. However, the first thing that I have to say is how we are so disappointed that you guys can make a decision, and how dare you all have the audacity not to give us any information or answers, any questions that's important to us taxpayers and as a community. The superintendent, Dr. Art McCoy, has been very instrumental helping our Ferguson-Floreson School District keep in our accreditation. That's one thing he has done good and many more positive impact on the entire Ferguson-Floreson School District. Dr. Art McCoy helped solve student transportation issue by getting out, raising over twenty-some thousand dollars himself, no other board member. Dr. Art McCoy interacts with students, parents, teachers, in many ways that encourages all of us to participate in more school-related activities. Dr. Art McCoy is sincerely dedicated to the educate, to the education of each and every student in the Ferguson-Floreson School District. And for that reason, we insist that Dr. McCoy remains the superintendent of the Ferguson-Floreson School District. This is so hurtful to know that in this day and age, that if people disagree, they are to lose their jobs. Even though you may disagree on various educational issues, it's important for the sake of our students that the board and Dr. Art McCoy come together and compromise so that our Ferguson-Floreson can move forward. We all are different human beings. Human beings agrees to disagree, but remember, we all have opinions. In life, and it's very important. If you ask me, I'm really, I really don't want to say what it is, but it's definitely a racial issue, and it's seeming like that we're going back to slavery, and it's not fair. Two, the community and the taxpayers and the students of the Ferguson-Floreson School District, how dare you six guys do this to the students? They're more important than anything, more important than you, more important than Dr. McCoy, and he puts them first. You guys don't. Have a great day, and I hope you sleep well.
Good evening. My name is Tracy Simmons, and I'm a proud parent here in Ferguson-Floreson School District. I am also a graduate of the Ferguson-Floreson School District. I graduated from McClure North in eighty-nine, and I graduated with a scholastic diploma. My mother did not send me to school, my mother made sure that I was educated. I myself came from Kenlock, which was considered one of the poorer communities of the Ferguson-Floreson School District. But if you know anything about Kenlock, Kenlock bred a lot of good people. Jennifer Lewis came out of Kenlock. We have a historical museum, we have a lot of things, and a lot of great people that have come out of Kenlock, Missouri. I stand here as a parent whose child was transferred into the Ferguson-Floreson School District. My daughter came from Normandy. Every day that I send my daughter to school, I thank God that I don't have to decide whether or not she would have been bused to a district that lost, that was because of a loss of accreditation. I met Dr. McCoy last year at Walnut Grove after having my first experience, it was the first year, and he was quote-unquote "an after the fact", because after my first year, I wanted more than anything to pull my daughter out of Ferguson-Floreson School District. But upon meeting Dr. McCoy at the community outreach, he changed the lives of parents, children, and I think he changed the lives of even the grandparents that showed up. Dr. McCoy took the time to get to know the parents, the students. And as I said, the grandparents, it wasn't a black or white thing. He didn't make me feel any more important as a black woman or any less as important as my neighbor who was a white woman who had mixed children. It wasn't a thing about race, this was about educating our students. I'm here to give accolades to Dr. McCoy because he has been the most loving, kind, compassionate educator I've ever experienced in my life. The students need him. And if I had not been an involved parent, as Mr. Chabot said, and had I not come out to the meeting, had I not been involved in my daughter's education, I would never have had the personal experience. I'm not speaking about Dr. McCoy just on the strength of, because I've read about him in the newsletter. I'm talking about what I personally know. And because of him, the children look forward to being better students. My daughter came from a district on A honor roll. So to meet Ferguson-Floreson School District A honor roll, it wasn't an easy task. But I stand today the proud parent of an A honor roll student at Walnut Grove Elementary. And I refuse to accept that Dr. McCoy is not a good role model or not a good superintendent for our students. So I too demand that Dr. McCoy be reinstated.
Hi, my name is Brenna Claire, I'm a senior here at McClure North. I've been in this district since I was in kindergarten, I went to Combs Elementary, and then Cross Keys, and now here. I couldn't tell you what Mr. Spiegel looks like, I don't, I have no idea, I don't know. I like knew the name growing up, but, and then Dr. McCoy came here, and he would come and speak to us, and he'd wait at the door and shake our hands. I'm sorry. He would shake each of our hands just so like, to show that he cared. Everybody's saying that, I know some people have said like it's a race thing, and I would hope that it's not, but he doesn't care just about the black students. I guess, I guess the stereotype is because I'm white that I have money, and I don't. And he paid for me to take my ACT again. He gave my counselor his credit card number and paid for it. So, obviously if something was illegal, then yeah, but I just said, he cares about his students, he really does.
My name's Erica Fletcher, and I'm also a senior at McClure North High School. And I would just like to start off saying that we are all sitting in the gymnasium where I personally have seen Dr. McCoy speak numerous occasions to all of the students inside of this school. While I sit here and I see every single parent come up here and I appreciate everyone's words tonight, I believe that the students have a lot more effect on you all because it is us who is above right now. While the parents are better with their words, I've seen the students be a lot better with their reactions. This morning, after one of our periods, I saw over a hundred students sitting in after the bell rang in the hallway, not allowing anyone else to pass through doing a sit-in, honoring Dr. McCoy and trying to get him back to office. Today, I see over a hundred, maybe over two hundred, three hundred people sitting at this meeting, supporting Dr. McCoy. While none of us can sway your vote or sway your opinion because it's not our choice, ultimately it is yours, I hope y'all do take into consideration everyone's opinions inside of this room because it does affect all of us. I did not come here to disrespect any of you, but you all should respect our opinions. That's all.
Hi, my name's Lori Bacon, I've lived here for fifty-six years. I have three kids that went through the district. I personally, I don't know this person, I don't know who's responsible for anything, but I, these are being played. I wonder what happened to our second quarter grades? Did they go away so that we can play numbers with the semester that counts so that we don't lose our accreditation? Because that's not the way to do it. It's not the way to do it. I don't know how that happened, but semester grades are just gone. Teachers are only allowed, like so many referral, they get called on the carpet. Our teachers and our principals are too good for this, they deserve so much better, and so do our children. My daughter is in a class that during that period, at least three days of the week, they're not even studying the subject matter. They have to sit down and read a book on how to be a good person. I don't know what happened to the respect, but we really need to go back to teaching our children to be respectful to their teachers and their principals. And if this is what you have to do, I don't know who did it, but please, please, fix it. I think it would be better to lose the accreditation. Lose it. Because this isn't right, my child's not getting a good education, she's not. What is that? She's not even learning the class she's supposed to be learning. McClure North, right here is where she goes. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Cynthia Jordan, and while I'm not a parent or a student or even a resident of the school district, I think it's very important for me to weigh in as a business leader. My day job is vice president of one of the largest banks here in the St. Louis metro area. And I had the opportunity to serve on your budget task force last year under the leadership of Dr. McCoy. The one common bond that compelled me to come tonight to show support for a friend is the fact that we share the same award. That award is the St. Louis Business Journal's Forty Under Forty. I won in two thousand and nine, and Dr. McCoy won in two thousand and twelve. I had the opportunity, I had the opportunity in September I had the opportunity, I had the opportunity in September to hear Dr. McCoy speak to his peers, to the Forty Under Forty Alumni Network. He talked about his passion, his philosophy, and how he wanted to change the effectiveness of education. And we've seen it happen. I also want to let the board know that I've had the privilege and the opportunity to go to China last year. I went to Beijing. I went to Shanghai. And while race has come up time and time again, I would like for you all to understand and recognize the objective that you have really before you. And that's education. That's competitiveness. Our children are competing against the rest of the world when they leave your halls. It is vitally, incredibly important to have visionaries like Dr. McCoy at the helm of school districts like this. So our young men and women are adequately prepared to compete, not only at the national level, but internationally. So what I would like to ask each of you, because certainly I'm not here to pass judgment, I'm not here to be biased, I am a concerned citizen that's engaged in supporting and promoting visionaries who come only once in a while. Dr. McCoy is one of those visionary leaders. And so I would ask for the school board to humbly and carefully reconsider reinstating Dr. McCoy.
Good evening. My name is Jared Williams and I'm a junior at McClure South Berkeley High School. Last month, my family went through a very, very large change. I lost my grandmother and she was seventy-three years old. And Dr. McCoy came to my school the month before that after a gun was brought into the school. And he stripped down to his socks, his shoes, his pants, and his shirt in front of us and said, "I don't have to bring anything in here for you guys because those are the kind of kids you are." And I really appreciate him doing that. And he also talked to us about the teachers that we had, the teachers and the administrators. And the teachers and administrators that we have really care. I have teachers that will work with me when I have a bad day because I've missed so many days with my grandmother, because I've done this, because I've done that, because so much stuff has happened. So, and I wanted to know, this says, uh, the lawyer that wrote the first letter obviously didn't write this. I want, it says, "The members will not reply to comments." I want to know if I can ask a question. Which of you is Mr. Martinez? That would be you. Okay. I wanted to say, everything you said, and to the gentleman that said, um, I'm not sure if it was you or not, that had the kids and everything, your kids are not the only ones that matter. If you're basing it off solely your kids, then there is a problem because your kids are not the only kids in the district. There are kids other places. And if the goal of the school board is to effectively serve the students of the Ferguson-Floreson School District, then we need to have our superintendent who we feel served us the best. And that's all I have to say.
Hi, my name is Jasmine Scott and I'm a junior at McClure South Berkeley. And I wanted to talk about one incident with Mr. R. McCoy. Um, last year, I've been in Ferguson-Floreson School District since the seventh grade and before then I got in a lot of trouble with school. Um, I've been on honor roll from seventh grade all the way to tenth grade. Last year I got into an incident. I got into an incident where I got put out of school and I lost all my credits. If it was not because of R. McCoy, I wouldn't have gotten him back. I worked effortlessly at the S Center. I was behind four credits and now I'm above seven credits. Mr. R. McCoy personally emailed me myself and he, he checked to see how I'm doing, see what's going on at school. He could, like he said, he came to our school last year, I mean, a couple of months ago to talk about an incident that happened. And he personally emailed me afterwards to talk about what happened and what can I do better for the school about, as far as, um, starting a group to help the kids at our school so they can do something better besides, you know, what happened at our school. So that's basically what I just wanted to talk about. Mr. R. McCoy is a man who helps everybody at this school. I don't think the child should solely base it off race because I don't believe in it. I think Mr. R. McCoy wants the best for everybody as far as education, rights, and everything else. This is not about race and I'm so tired of people saying this is about race. This is about education. Everybody here wants their kids to graduate. I plan on graduating December of next year. So that's all I wanted to say. If y'all really want to pray for children or do something best for children, then please let Mr. R. McCoy back.
Hello, I am Keema Kendrick and I am in fifth grade at Johnson-War bash. So if you're quote-unquote "the Board of Education," why won't you let him back? What's the point of suspending him? He shakes, he shakes your hands with pride. He loves all of us, but where's the love from you guys? That's all I gotta say.
Hello, my name is Bridget Curry. I have two children currently in the district and I'm going to graduate last year. I have two comments, a testimony, and a few questions. The King's heart is the heart of the Lord. As the rivers of water, he turneth with his sorrows and will. Every way of a man is right in his own eyes, but the Lord ponders the heart. I pray that the will of God be done in this situation on behalf of the, of the students, of all the students. Second is a testimony. In September, my family was faced with a crisis and to no avail, it seemed like all hope was gone. But God, but God made a way when it looked like there was no way, using this community along with Dr. McCoy, Dr. Diggs, and Dr. Hopper to prevent that, of which I'm very grateful. First question, what are you so afraid of? Second, does this difference of focus, philosophy have anything to do with the students coming from districts who lost accreditation? Do you feel like you're overpopulated? Uh, who are you hiding behind? How much are they paying you? And I'll leave you with the lyrics to the work, to the song Yolanda Adams sings, "What About the Children?" Tears streaming down, her heart is broken. Because her life is hurting, so am I. He wears a frown, his dreams are choking. And because he stands alone, his dreams will die. So humbly, I come to you and say, as I sound aloud the warfare of today. Hear me, I pray. What about the children? To ignore is so easy. So many innocent children would choose the wrong way. So what about the children? Remember when we were children? And if not for those who loved us and who cared enough to show us, where would we be
Hello, my name is Tracy Deshaie. I am a resident of Florence and I've been here for twenty-one years. I have seven children that have, well, that six have graduated through this district. My baby is a sophomore up here at McClure North High School. She's an honor roll student. She's been that since she's been in school. I was gonna pull her out when I found out that Jeff Spiegel was leaving. And I called Jeff and I said, "Well, since you're leaving, I don't, you know, I'm not too keen on who might be the superintendent." And he said, "No." He says, "I got a person that's," he said, "that, that hopefully the board will vote in and he's gonna be great." And I turned around, I said, "Well, I tell you what, whoever the new superintendent, I'm gonna give Ferguson-Floreson a chance." I met with Dr. McCoy and that is a man of integrity. You all are making a very big mistake. And may I say, I am a registered voter and I do vote. Okay? And by the way, my six children that have graduated from McClure North, I have three with degrees and three working on degrees. So it's, you know, it's about education for me and that's what I've always pushed to my children. So you all need to wake up, smell the coffee, and get Dr. McCoy back.
Good evening. My name is Willie. Good evening, my name is Willie Anthony. I am a second generation of the district. I had five children to go through the district. Now I have seven grandchildren. The young lady that came up, Keema Kendrick, that's my granddaughter. Scholar Bowl, okay? Spelling meeting, okay? And when I saw her get up, I said, "Grandmama better get up because grandma always right in her mouth." Now when Jeff announced to my friend and I that he was retiring, I said, "I want to meet the new superintendent." We had breakfast with Dr. McCoy and Jeff Spiegel. And I told Dr. McCoy, I say, "I pray you in and I can pray you out." I'm praying him in and I'm hoping that you guys would be man enough and woman enough to say, "I'm sorry, I made a mistake. Can we come back to the table and talk it over again? I'm not gonna cry, I'm not gonna beg because God is not moved by tears. But words and actions, faith and works. If you have faith in this district, don't worry, it ain't gonna take me thirty seconds to say what I got to say. If you have faith in this district, let's work together. I don't want no harm to come to you all because I know you all love this district. So prove it. That's all I'm asking. Because you will see this face again.
Greetings. I'm an American citizen as well as a Missouri resident. And as I see the crowd here and you gentlemen, I know you are the board. And what I know about a board, a board is elected to oversee the program goals implemented and policies. And you are elected to be in a position so the school district can operate in a certain manner. And there's presidents, chairs, co-chairs, and there's a rule on how you vote and how everyone says, but everyone collectively have to come together for the children, for the community, for St. Louis County as well as St. Louis City because we're really one unit. I am forty years old and when I see the board and I see this room, I remember being a student in Elliott School District and it wasn't good accreditation and being locked in a classroom because there wasn't any supervision. I also remember being de-thanked to the county and how cruel it was to be a woman of color to come into a place where people treated me as an adult. And I did not understand the words that were coming out of their mouth when they called me names that I never heard before in my life. And at that time, they were allowed to paddle us. I even was on the debate team and had a debate teacher tell the bus to leave me because she did not want me to compete. I was the only African-American on the debate team. I refuse to say that this is about color. When I look at our nation, I look at our community, and I look at our schools, why is it so many people of color finding themselves in the same situation all over the world? I've analyzed, I prayed, I tried to decipher because I was not allowed to be systematically programmed in the St. Louis County School District. I was self-educated through the SLATE program and got my GED. And I learned how important it was that school was here to guide you through education, but you were to apply yourself. So I understand, board, that you're making a decision collectively beyond your control. I understand that we're in a system of transition and I understand anything that's gonna keep the transition happening, you will then have to be in a position to stop it. What I see in the Ferguson School District, I know is way beyond you. And I just pray our city come together and realize that we are not where we used to be.
I am Karen Oren Air and I'm from Welston. My grandson is in the Ferguson School District. I don't know how to say this other than the fact that it is not about you. It is about our kids. We do, really do believe that we do have another Obama in our midst. You can't stop progress. If you think that you're gonna stop one Italian kid, one Puerto Rican kid, one black kid, one Jewish kid, one Catholic kid, one at a time, that's what you're doing. You don't care about our children. Your kids probably go to the best schools in the state of Missouri and out of state. We're not asking for a handout. We're asking for our right, a hand up. God has done a lot of things for all of you all. I cannot believe that among the, just one person, just one person, would stand up for a man that has been anointed since the day he was born to be who he is. You can't stop him. If he goes to another school district, that's our loss, not yours. You have done what you're gonna do with your life. Stop stagnating our kids. The white ones, the black ones, the Puerto Rican ones, the Italian ones. To me, black people, us, we are basically not racist. We sit and we watch and we watch and we sit back and we go, "Well, ain't nothing gonna happen, even if I do open my mouth." And you know what? You guys are trying to prove that. But I would suggest to every parent in this school district, don't send your kids to school until they bring Mr. McCoy back.
Good evening. My name is Shanice Bolden. I have a husband that's a substitute in Ferguson-Floreson School District. I have four kids that attend schools in Ferguson-Floreson School District. My comment is for you with the blue tie on. You said earlier at the beginning of the meeting that your job as a board member is to serve us. I don't care where you eat, where you shop, where you go to church, how many times you've been to the Festival of Flowers, how many times you celebrated Fourth of July. If you're making a decision that a gymnasium full of parents, teachers, and students don't agree with, you're not serving us, you're serving yourself. That means you're not doing your job. So why are you right here but Dr. McCoy is gone?
Good evening. Um, my name is Gail Ravy. I went to preschool in the district. I went to elementary school in the district. I went to middle school in the district. I went to high school in the district. My kids are in the district. My grandnieces and nephew are in the district and I know these board members personally and their kids do go to our school. So, let me go on. I'm gonna tell you something else. And now, I'm gonna say to you all, I am sorry that you have to sit here and listen to some of the comments that are inappropriate. I'm sorry that you have to hold this because you're not being paid a dime to sit here and take this. You are not being paid. Wait, wait for it. Please. Because I, I do appreciate you letting every voice be heard. That's awesome. Now, I'm gonna talk to Dr. McCoy because I hope he's watching this. Last year, when my family was in an accident and my father and my sister were almost killed, he came to me because we personally know each other and he said to me, "If there is anything that I could do for you and your family, I am here for you and I will do it." And I love that man. Now, what we don't understand is what is really going on. And what my mama would say is, "It all comes out in the wash." So we need to be peaceful and wait. And we don't know. But listen, this is what I want to speak to you all about, is you're here supporting this man, but we need you. Our school district needs you. Our kids need you. They need you. They don't look like me. They respect me because I respect them. But they look like you and they love you and they need you. But if you only come here to support Dr. McCoy and they don't see the love that you're showing for him at our schools, then we have nothing. And go ahead and take it away. Because if we're not gonna come united and stand together and be strong for our community and for our district, then what do we got?
Good evening. My name is Nashonda Brown, parent of Brown Patterson. And I am a parent in Ferguson-Floreson School District. And I graduated one son, two thousand twelve, from McClure North. And I have an eleven-year-old at Robinwood Elementary. And I am not here because I know Dr. McCoy personally. I actually had a better relationship with Superintendent Jerry Spiegel than I have with Dr. McCoy, so I don't know him. I did come tonight as a concerned parent. We were not provided enough information, um, and- And, and I'm certain that being much closer to the situation and, and working probably on almost a daily basis with Dr. McCoy, I am going to assume that you made the best decision, in your opinion. However, what this does resemble to me, though, it, it looks like the demise of the St. Louis Public School System, once their superintendent and, and issues started to arise. And some of the, the other districts that we've been transferring students in. And probably unlike some of you, or I, I don't know if you have or hadn't admitted it, I was too afraid of the transferring students. That was a fear of mine. And my principal said clearly and bluntly to me, with no explanation, that every child deserves an education. And that was the end of the conversation. I fully support if that being Dr. McCoy's vision. And their, my son's class, I feel, is extremely overcrowded, but they have not had one incident this year. And while I come to you as a Christian, I understand that I may not be speaking to them. So I say to you that you would search yourselves and recognize that you do have the power and the authority, but to use that power for good and not evil.
Good evening. My name is Karen Walker Wright, and I am a Florissant resident. And my concern is, but first of all, let me just say, Art McCoy did demonstrate initiative in raising funds for the Florissant District when they needed it. Also, my main concern in coming to you this evening is about the disbursement and approval of funds and where they go and how you're spending it. Because, you know, just this year alone, children were reading about witches in the school district. Tell me, that is not going to be on the assessment test? That's not gonna be on the ACT test? The children are barely bringing books home? The teacher's saying there's not enough books in the classroom? You know, what, what is wrong, what, there's something wrong with that picture. If we're going broke, where is the money going to? It's not being distributed in an effective manner, and that is my concern. My three sons are on a honor roll in the Ferguson-Florescent District, and I intend for it to stay that way. But if they're gonna be taught about witches, they can be taught about God as well. And to me, prayer should be put in, in the school. And also, there needs to be more men in the classroom. And maybe that would assist in cutting out the bullying. So, you know, I see a lot of, there are very good teachers in our district, and they care, and they know me. I will do a drive-by at this school in a minute. The assistant principal was so nice to say, "Miss Walker Wright, you come on in, and you can sit and talk with the teachers." Under Mr. McCoy's leadership, and I appreciate that, because I wanna know what's going on with my child. You know, and you have this thing in place where you have to call twenty-four-hour notice to go to the school. Well, I don't want anybody to try to put things together. I wanna be able to walk in there when I get ready to see what's going on. You know, I've seen first-time students being picked on. I've seen, you know, fights going on, you know, and just lack of social skills, lack of supplies that the teachers have to carry out the lesson plan. That should not be in two thousand and thirteen. It should not be. And I just really would like to know where the funds are going. Because I'm paying my taxes every year, and the school district is getting a majority of it. And I would like to know how it's being distributed. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Mark Davis, and I'm speaking to you all on behalf of myself and a lot of the other young African-American men that are approaching their thirties. And I say that specifically because I'm a doctoral student at St. Louis University. I'm, I'm very ecstatic, because at this point, I've completed all my course requirements to become a Doctor of Education, and I'm working on my dissertation at this point. My dissertation, the reason I say this is because my dissertation focuses on the experiences and perceptions of African-American male superintendents. And while it is disheartening, what's going on, I would like to give you all an observation, because it's apparent that you all have made a difference here tonight. I became a principal at twenty-eight years old, assistant principal in the state of Missouri. And I've served that for a year now. I'm a doctoral resident, as I've already told you, but I think what is going on here and what has been done has been very disheartening to those of us who aspire to be what Dr. McCoy is. It's my hope that, as, as the young lady said before me, that you all could search inside of yourselves. But if not, I would tell you that there are several young African-American men who will be stepping up to the plate. Not just on tonight or in April, but throughout this winter period and throughout the spring period, to bring attention to this issue, whether it be through our churches or through our organizations. Thank you.
Good evening. It was not my intention to address this board tonight. It was not my intention to stand at this podium. I don't have to introduce myself to any of you on this board. You already know me. I cannot tell you how completely disappointed, disgusted, disenchanted I am over the things that I have seen and heard in these past few days. And you all have been a little quick over there with those signs on that time, so I want you to know that I'm gonna say what I need to say. My son just graduated from this district in December. I have one biological child, but I am a surrogate mom to hundreds of children in this district. Some that I have taken into my home and raised as my own. And I've had the complete support of Dr. McCoy and some of his administrative fine staff in this district. I want to trust and believe that this is not a fait accompli. I want to trust and believe that you have said that you want to resolve these issues and differences with Dr. McCoy. Unfortunately, my trust and my faith are shaken. One act placing a letter on your district website and sending out to parents inferring that you have met with the county executive to discuss the issues before this board relative to Dr. McCoy. It's scurrilous. There was no meeting. And how can I trust? And how can these parents and stakeholders in this district trust that you are men and women of your word behind something like that? The reason these people are in this audience, and the reason you see the tears, the anger, the hurt, the moral outrage, is because Dr. McCoy is not just a superintendent. And the move that you made was not just an administrative move. You have moved and shaken the very foundation of this community. You have taken someone who has been a mother, a father, a sister, a brother, a neighbor, a cousin, a friend, a leader, a counselor, a trusted advisor to countless number of people in this community. And with the stroke of a pen in one administrative act, you have undone the efforts of so many people who have come before you in bringing this community together. When I stand here and I listen to people turn on each other about race, when I watch students feel compelled to take up for each other, black students and white students, because they know it's not about race, you have widened a chasm in this community with the stroke of an administrative pen. And I implore you to understand that this is not about Art McCoy. Art McCoy will be fine. He is brilliant. Any community will be fortunate to have him. It will be our loss. What I am asking you, what I am asking you is to understand that as elected officials, public servants, Art McCoy reports to you. You report to these stakeholders. I am asking you to hear them, to feel them, to search in your hearts and understand that whatever infraction Art McCoy is allegedly guilty of, it is not deserving of the death sentence you are putting this community under.
Well, I had to go to work tonight, and I honestly wish I could have been here from the beginning to see what was going on. And I'm not here to attack you guys. I don't know what the underlying causes of everything are. But I came here to vouch for Dr. McCoy, because he's been in my life since the minute I stepped into high school. He's done many things for me, and I could seriously say that he's one of the greatest superintendents or father figure that I've ever had in my life. And whatever's going on for you guys, that's going on. But for me and many other students, I've never seen a man come into a school and personally shake hands with kids. I've never seen a guy give lectures and talk to people. I've never heard of Spiegel coming up and saying, "Oh, here's a lecture. I can connect with kids." This man truly connected with people. He gave me the opportunity freshman year. I wanted to get out of high school sooner. He gave me the opportunity, opportunity to graduate in six semesters and not eight. That was something that no other superintendent would have ever let any other child do. Honestly, because I know state law requires seven semesters or whatever. But he was willing to put me on classes and get me through that. Unfortunately, I didn't take that opportunity, but if it wasn't for him, I wouldn't have that chance. And another thing he did for me that was just amazing, over the summer, I got the opportunity to go to John Hopkins and take a visit. And if it wasn't for him and paying more than half of my tuition to go there, which was three thousand dollars, he paid more than half of that. I don't know any other superintendent that wouldn't have done that. And I had an amazing time. If it wasn't for him, I would have never had that opportunity. And God bless that man. Whatever he's doing, he will always be great. And I know you guys know that. I know from the bottom of your hearts that you know he is one of the greatest men and superintendents that you could ever get. No, I will never meet a guy that will never do anything like that for another student. Taking the time, I would meet with him monthly to set up these classes and talk about my future. I've never met a man that would do that. And to say that he is a second father to me after being able to talk to him just once, like, I greatly appreciate for that. I was coming to him actually last week to go get a recommendation letter. I couldn't even see him because of whatever happened, so that opportunity is lost. I couldn't even get that. So I don't even know whoever the other man is. I hope I get to meet you, whoever's the new superintendent. I'd be happy to meet you, because I'd love to get to know you. And hopefully you do the same things that he has done for this community, because he has done so many things. And I know wherever he is, coming from an eighteen-year-old who's been with him since I was fourteen, I know he's doing whatever he's doing, and God has taken him on the right path. And I hope you guys find the right path and bring him back into our community, because that's all everyone's asking for, and that's obviously maybe ninety-nine percent of the people here want him back in our community. So hopefully you guys can give some kind of answers to what's going on. I'm not here to attack you guys, because I don't even know what's going on. But I just wanna vouch for a great man, and personally wanna thank him, if you're looking at this camera, for everything you've done for me, because I couldn't get that opportunity only a week ago. And that's all I needed to say.
Hello, ladies and gentlemen of the board. I'm a thirteen-year-old who attends Cross Keys Middle School. I am in eighth grade. Our generation is at unrest right now. All of us who are in the Ferguson-Florescent School District, and those of us who understand a little bit of what's going on, nobody knows for sure, but all of us who get the gist of what's going on, we are at unrest. Why? Because you are taking away the man who gave us hope, the man who gave us strength, the man who would come to us and shake our hands and smile at us. I don't recall Spiegel ever doing that.
Thank you again for this opportunity. I just wanted to come back up and kind of, kind of rein things in a little bit from my point of view anyhow, and put things back into perspective. When, with regard to race and people who say that, you know, they're tired of hearing about race, sometimes it's in your face, and you can't ignore it, but you don't want it to be about race. But even when you step outside of that, when you hear people like how passionate that young lady was, she couldn't even continue, and the young man here who missed out on an opportunity because of what you all decided to let him go and put him on administrative leave. I feel like if a stranger walked past here and they heard all of these things that were being said about Dr. McCoy, they would like him, and they've never met him. I feel like who, if, if there's anyone in this world... Yeah, and she told me that I could speak again. Oh, well, see, okay, that's fine. He said I can't speak again. I did ask, and I was told I could, but he said no. Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for freedom of speech. Thank you. But I just wanted to say, I hope that just the passion of what everybody said, I hope that it really, really makes a difference. I mean, I just don't know how somebody could listen to even the young people and just everyone. I just hope that it really reaches you. I just pray that it does. And we can let go of all the anger or whatever. It's like righteous anger. It's like we have a reason to be riled up. But once everything calms down, I, I also wanna say that I hope that the parents do come out to the school more, because even when I was here shadowing with my kid all day today, in one class, I was the only parent. In another class, there were two of us. And it's like really sad to see, you know, that we do need more parents to turn out. So I really wanna say that, too.
Good night, pretty much is where we're at. It bothers me that it's ten-thirty at night, and my kids are texting me asking me, "Daddy, where you at?" Because my kids don't go to bed, because they're used to daddy being there tucking them in. I look around and I see kids who should have to go to school in the morning. They're here. My problem with all of this is the focus has left off the education part. We're, we're supposed to be educating kids. The kids who are here should be at home bed, so they won't be ready for school tomorrow. My kids won't be ready for school tomorrow. My daughter sat in on a sit-in, so she missed three hours of class today. So she missed part of her education today. I had to go to class tonight, because I'm in school. I left school early, so now I'm missing my education. Our focus needs to be on the education part of this. I don't know what you guys deal with. We don't know. I don't wanna get in all of that. But at what point are we gonna look at the education part? I'm sending my kids here for an education, and if they're here at ten o'clock at night, they're missing out. If my daughter's missing three hours of class, she's missing out. If I'm missing two hours of class, I'm missing out. We're here for the education. When me and my wife don't get along, I don't suspend her. I don't fire her. I didn't divorce her. We go to bed, and you know what we do? We reason together. I don't know what you guys deal, issue is. Can, can we not reason together? Can we not reason together? You have not divorced your wife because y'all reason together. So let us reason together and let's figure out education for our kids so that they're not missing the quality education that we send them for. Thank you.
How you guys doing? My name is Quinian. I graduated last year. I was in class the other day. I went to extra credit. I go to Flow Valley, I did A+. And we were talking about Nelson Mandela and how he was part of the ANC and how he was a very powerful, just one man. He was very powerful and they locked him up for it. So I was sitting at home and they was talking, I was on Instagram, because teenagers are very powerful because we have access to the internet. I was sitting on Instagram and they were talking about the sit-in and I was asking what happened and they told me that you guys had suspended Dr. McCoy. And I was so furious because just last year, he stood here and I've never seen one of you guys here before. And he stood here and he gave us a speech about his life and how the key to life is success and education, which meant a lot to me. Going up to a school, I didn't like high school. It wasn't for me, but I did it anyway. He met with me personally and he told me that all I have to do is, and life is succeed, my education. I've never met any one of you guys. I feel like you take, when you take him away, you're taking our voice away. He is our voice. He's our connection to you guys. You guys care about the paychecks. He cares about our education. He cares about us personally. And I can say that because he has had conversations with me and my mother, who made sure that I got through high school. She went here and my brother is going here. And last time I checked, he supported them going to the Hundred Men Gala. I don't think you guys did. So on that said, I think you need to bring him back because he is an important factor. He is making change. He's doing things that you guys are not doing or capable of doing. And I think that you guys are scared that he is overpowering you guys and he can have more power than you. And that is a problem for you. So I understand that, but if you felt like that, you should have been more involved with us. And I can say that because I went here and I just graduated and I've never seen none of you guys in my classes. I was in choir class just last year. He walked in the class and he talks, "All you guys sound good." Never seen you, 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 you. But I've probably seen you in your BMW a couple of good times. So how about this? Why don't you bring him back and then there will be no issue. Now, I'm sitting out in my class and I have a test too, so I'm missing out on my education as well because of you guys' tomfoolery. So please bring him back. That's all I got to say.
Good evening. I'm Les Lentz. Couple of election cycles ago, some people campaigned on the board because of a decision that was made by the board that they continue to be not fiscally responsible. This move really proves that the board's not fiscally responsible. I think either last month or the month before, you give someone permission to borrow money to make payroll real soon. Other districts, as soon as that margin gets very low, things very bad start happening. This district was on its way up and now I fear for the district in the 15th cycle. Fiscal responsibility, in that case, was $200,000 over 20 years. This is $200,000 a year and you're going to pay for his contract for the next three years. Thank you.
My name is Gabrielle Tucker. I'm a parent. I'm a taxpayer. I'm a voter. And this is a school board meeting. Yes, I do love Dr. Art McCoy. Yes, he is my friend. And yes, I would love to see him return to his position. But I am looking to the future as well. An act that swing, that swiftly swings does not just cut once because momentum is started. I know that if we are concerned with the fiscal stability of our school district, that we need to be concerned not just for $200,000 over a three-year period of time, but we have a $4 million concern. We have several concerns that are all fiscal. And I would like to see our school district continue and to continue to be a thriving district. I want a strong district. When my children graduate, I want it to be from an accredited school. I want the piece of paper that their diploma is printed on to be worth more than three cents at Home Depot or at home office, someplace that you can go and print it for free in a basement. I am more concerned with the future and what cuts will follow this. This is an indicator. It is not a sole, single act. It is an indicator of a deeper ill. We put a proposition out, Proposition A. It failed. Maybe you don't know. You're a voter. Did you vote for it? You have power, but this is not a matter of power. This is a matter of survival, the survival of our school district. I could be passionate and bring you to tears, but I want to make you think. Yes, we would love to have Dr. McCoy back. Make no mistake. However, we also want to have a strong district. We want to know that the decisions that are being made are truly in the best interest of every teacher, every principal, every parent, and yes, every student. Every person that has left, God bless them and be with them, but those of you that remain, remember, we're accountable. We have the power to vote and we need to do it. And we need to do it regularly. And we need to be at the school board meetings. And we need to have our voice heard on a regular basis and not on a one-time emotional high. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is David Jackson. I'm the president of the St. Louis Board of Education. I commend you for holding this meeting and giving the community an opportunity to speak about their concerns about their school district. On the other hand, I, as a board member, I'm sure that you are aware that public education is in turmoil. The Ferguson-Floreson School District is one of the, in our opinion, one of the best school districts in the area besides Lyndburn. We wish we were at where you are now. We know for a fact that we're going to lose our accreditation in 2015. We know that the Ferguson-Floreson School District is on a upward bound. And it's due primarily to Dr. McCoy. I personally have spoken to Dr. McCoy, not only about the issue in St. Louis, but nationally. And he's attuned to all of it. We would readily accept and try to convince Dr. McCoy to come to work with the St. Louis Public School District, if it was us. We know that you made a tough and hard decision and we know there had to be some differences there. But you must remember, if one of you descended, then there's some doubt in your action and decision. And we would like for you to consider, as a board member, your community, your children that you're entrusted to educate and do the right thing. We understand how the progressive disciplinary action work. And we're concerned that this isn't a good day for the Ferguson-Floreson School District. It is not a good day. We know the decision you made, as stated, was one that wasn't made lightly. But look to that one descendant vote. If you all did not vote in concert, then you must look at it again. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I had no intention of speaking, but you guys have compelled me to speak. My name is Shalana Oliver. It's spelled O-L-I-V-E-R. I am an attorney and I am a product of the Hazelwood School District, a proud member of the Hazelwood School District. And I'm privileged to see many of my teachers and administrators who are here. And with that said, I'm done with you. So let me speak to you guys. Take a look at this banner in that back wall. And it caught my eye as I walked out of the door and I had to come back around. Something caught my heart. And it says, "Protect this house." Protect this house. I want to implore on all of you to stay engaged, stay involved in your community. I have been blessed to work for a United States Senator, a Secretary of State, the St. Louis County Assessor, two state representatives, and now the county executive. And I want you all to know that the power lies in each and every one of you. This is not about Dr. McCoy. This is not about this board behind you. It's about each and every one of you. I'm a registered voter. Are you? Are you? And if you're not, go get registered first thing in the morning tomorrow. What President Obama says is, "Don't boo, vote." This decision lies with you. Take a look at when all of these terms expire and take that to heart. Go home tonight and talk to your children about what's going on. Talk to them about the importance of education and don't be dismayed by one person. He is an influential, excellent, brilliant role model, but we have to be strong, move on, be productive. You guys have to stay engaged in your community, not just when we're upset on moments like this. Continue to support people like Redditt Hudson, people like Dr. Graham, who are proud servants of our community. Stay engaged. Find out when the elections are. If you have a question, get up and call. And for you young students, I am so proud of you guys. I am so proud of you. Because you're missing, you are missing time in school, but you are learning invaluable lessons that will stay with you for the rest of your life. Don't you ever forget this injustice that you have seen. Maybe you will become a lawyer like me and fight for change. This is what I do for a living. Be inspired by what's happening and learn from what's happening in front of you. And I'm so proud of you for being here and for speaking up, because Dr. McCoy's job has already been done and all of you already. And it doesn't end here. So remember that banner when you walk out of this room tonight. Protect this house today, tomorrow, and the day after that. Stay engaged. Keep the pressure on because nothing, nothing ever happens without pressure. And you guys, keep the pressure. And I'm so proud of you because what you don't realize is what happens here affects Hazelwood, affects all of the neighboring communities around us. And guess what? We will not stand for it. We will not stand for foolishness and arbitrary foolishness. And as a young attorney, I am privileged to speak in front of you today. And I want you to remember to protect this house with everything you have, because if you don't, then no one else will. Thank you and good night.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Stephanie Davis. And it is late in the evening. What I would like to say is that I have been to many, many board members in many districts. I have seen some disgraceful, violent, shameful occurrences during board meetings, but never, ever in Ferguson-Floreson. In the past, your board meetings have always been professional, seemingly caring, productive. And it says something about the characters that were on the board. I've never seen this type of divisiveness. I've never seen you all perpetuate something that would even encourage divisiveness. That's not your character. So are you changing? You always work together, just like you do in a family. Isn't this the Ferguson-Floreson family? Did something change? What I would really like to see is a forum for you all to come back with the answers that you really should have given tonight. And you should have given it because you didn't say that when this, when we convened, that there'll be no answers. You sent many papers out. None of them said anything about there'll be no answers. You did it at the last minute and that was kind of not fair. So when you do come back with the answers, personally, I would like to see Dr. McCoy have the floor and say what he needs to say also. I think that would really, that would really, it would be fair and it would gain some respect back that you all have lost with the community. And it would, it would be a resolve. That's what you're here for. You're supposed to serve. Do you agree? You said you wouldn't give any answers tonight. I'm going to ask you to just please make one exception for me. Could you just answer just one question for me? Do you believe that you're here to serve? Anybody? It's okay to, I mean, do you believe you're here to serve? Can you answer that? Okay, well, Dr. McCoy believes he was here to serve too. And that's what he wanted to do. So now he wants to serve and you want to serve. What difference in philosophy is that? And if there is a difference that you find in philosophy, why are you focusing on that? Why are you focusing on that? None of the rest of us can be successful focusing on that. The administration can. The teachers can. We teach the students, not to. So you know something? I feel that we truly have, you haven't reached any point of no return right now. I didn't come here to attack or to belittle. There's no point of no return yet. You have a chance to go back and do the right thing. Many of us make mistakes. And that's not the important thing. The important thing is what you do about it. Now, this has been played out on the news and in the community. You have a chance to go back and do something different. Many of the times when this type of a falling out takes place in a district, they dismantle. You all can fall out and come back together in front of everybody and be a different type of a leader. There are a lot of people who respect this district. Let's give them something, continue to give them something to respect. Let's don't go down shameful like a lot of other districts have. I have faith in you all and I definitely have faith in Dr. McCoy. It was nice speaking to you all tonight.
Thank you all for coming out this evening and sharing your views with the board. I'm sure the board has something to think about in its future deliberations. I'm certain we'll consider your comments and your feelings about Dr. McCoy and also the school district and students. I could thank the board for allowing me the opportunity to moderate this session and also for extending this tag, this longest public forum I've ever held. And it's really been a wonderful experience. And again, thank you very much and good evening.
Hi, Ms. Hogson. Mr. Chabot, would you call the roll, please? I'd like to thank everybody for coming tonight. It's been quite an event. I really appreciate all the heartfelt comments that everybody's made this evening. And I'll let you know that the board is going to deliberate over this for a while before we come to a decision. Thank you very much.